Good morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started at 9:05 a.m. So if everyone's just ready at 9:05, we'll keep going. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 22, 2022 virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I'm the chairman of the ZBA. We have a big day today as always, but I'm hoping that everyone is preparing for an Earth Day weekend celebrating outside as the temperature potentially hits 80 degrees here in Chicago tomorrow. Chicago's a city blessed with beautiful outdoor spaces that we need to protect. I hope everyone tuning in is able to celebrate through a neighborhood cleanup, lakefront, bike ride, or even a picnic in the park. Enjoy the time outside and always remember just to be kind to the surroundings, be kind to the nature, and pick up behind yourselves. First, I'd like to take initial notice of the fact that on April 1, 2022, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until May 1, 2022. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I'm making a determination pursuant to Section 7E2 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I'm also making a determination pursuant to Section E5 that because of the disaster proclamation declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals or its chief administrative officer or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor, now by me, and which are posted through the board's website. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via livestream. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting today. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those participating. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom until your matter is called. At that time, we will promote you to panelist. Please accept that promotion. There will be a short switch over where you lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, if you are here in opposition or in support of a matter, when your matter is called, please raise your hand so that we know you are here and may transfer you to become a panelist. If you are listening to the meeting via phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. Number four, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number five, please be mindful of the background noise, and please mute yourself when you are not speaking, and this goes for all times, including right now. Number six, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if that occurs. Number seven, if you are an active participant in the meeting, please do not watch the livestream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that. If you are an active participant in the meeting, please do not watch the livestream in tandem. Number eight, please make sure that you identify yourself whenever you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number nine, if an applicant or anyone in opposition or support to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is thus unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve these issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number 10, after your matter matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting to ensure adequate capacity. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which we of course always hope you are, I encourage you to watch the livestream, which is accessible from the Chicago ZBA website. Now, I'd like to call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can both hear and see me. Commissioner Saul?
President, I can hear and see you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
President, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Esposito?
President, I can hear and see you.
Commissioner Toya?
President, I can hear and see you.
I am present and quorum is established. The minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve those minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. They are approved as distributed. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The agenda has been approved. Now, we're going to take continuances and withdrawals. I'll go down the list that we have as potential continuances and withdrawals as of this morning, and then at the end, I'll open up in case there's any additional. So first up, we have calendars 116 through 11922Z. And Alderman Lee, I see your hand is... These are your words matters. So feel free to speak.
Good morning. Thank you. Thanks. My first time here, so please be gentle. Yes, I'm requesting a continuance on these items, 11622Z through 11922Z. I've not had an opportunity to review everything yet.
Sure. Great. Let me just see if we have someone on the matter to address that as well. So Counselor Fatikas, if you're here, I believe these are yours.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yep, we've got you.
Yeah, we have no objection. Obviously, this is a unique situation. So we would love to meet with the alderman, introduce the project, and we're not objecting to continuance.
Okay, great. Perfect. So Alderman Lee, again, welcome. We're happy to have you involved in our meetings going forward. And we're going to be continuing everything to the June meeting. So this is a two-month continuance. No further notice will be given, and it's June 17, 2022.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'll make sure that we meet in advance of that.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, how about calendar number 137-22-Z? I am promoting. Someone logged in with that number.
Another.
Good morning, Chairman. Nicholas Settle here for the record from the first ward office on behalf of Alderman La Spada. It's nice to see you. How are you doing today?
You too, Nick. Thank you. Good morning.
So this is a unique situation. Chairman, we respectfully request continuance. We're working with a couple of adjacent neighbors, continuing to resolve a matter that originally appeared in front of the board last spring in 2021. There were some exhibits presented by both or submitted to the board in time from both our residents. There is a question about the property owner that had relief denied last spring is still involved in the sale. And so there's some concern from the neighbors about what would happen to the zoning relief if a real estate contract fell through. We're working on getting that matter resolved with legal attorneys involved, and there just hasn't been any update on the specifics of that contract. I know it's a...
Yeah, we don't need to go into the specifics of that, Nick. We don't get into substance in this part, but so I'm understanding that this is potentially a one-month continuance, which we're now really only giving four matters that have not been continued before. So I see someone... First Counselor Moore is on, so Tom, if you want to speak to this as well.
Yeah, I think this is a much-to-do-about-nothing. The... You'll remember, the board will remember this case, and the applicant at the time, who is the title holder, was denied. This... There's a vacant lot there that will stay vacant forever until he's able to sell it. He has a contract to sell it. He's not involved in this application. He is as every... He had to file an EDS as every anybody who has an interest does. But the applicant is an Irish builder with a good reputation who wants to build a single-family home. The application is much less. We're only asking to have a garage. We got rid of every other variance.
Yeah, and Tom, I understand all of that. That's getting a little bit to the substance. You know, my... I would just... It would be helpful if you'd address just the one-month continuance, whether or not you have a specific opposition to that. It's an aldermanic office request. So and with it being such a short continuance, it's like three weeks.
So this board has always granted aldermanic requests, and I would imagine they'll do it this time, too. But the reason for the request, as I was told by Nick yesterday, was so that the contract can go ahead and close. The contract's contingent upon getting the variance, so their garage can be built. So it's not going to close, so we're going to be exactly the same position we are one month from now that we are now. But you know, in the board's discretion, if the...
So what I would ask then, Nick, and we're going to give this, it hasn't been continued before. So, Nick, you need more than one month.
Chairman, I respectfully agree that one month would... I just would respect that decision in order to be able to have the alderman and everyone involved, work with the residents, and come to an agreement about what this zoning relief actually means. That would be greatly appreciated, and I appreciate your consideration of this motion.
Okay, good. We're going to be continuing this one month into our May meeting. Again, this is 137-22-Z, and the date will be May 20, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councils of the Board.
Okay, so now we're going into matters that have previously continued, where I want to restate, unless there is some different circumstance, we will be, no matter what, continuing previously continued matters two months or more from here on out, because we've got to flush these out. So next up is 10-22-S and 76-22-Z. Let me know if someone's on.
Yes, Chairman, it's Nick Fatikas on behalf of the applicant.
Great, thanks, Nick. So I believe this has to do with an aldermanic request as well.
Yes, we actually just... Not to get into the substance, we had a meeting with representatives from the department, the alderman as recently as yesterday. We now have an agreed solution. The problem is we need time to put the solution to paper. I think we had discussed again a shorter continuance because the resolution was breached. But again, we'll follow the board's discretion on timing.
Yeah, so and this was one that I know it's a little bit different again. It's an aldermanic request, so I consider that a different circumstance. I will give one with the understanding that if it's not ready next month, we'll probably move to three. So and if anyone from the department is on as well, that might be helpful. So if we've got Steve Valenziana or Nancy Radzovich?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman. Nancy Radzovich.
Thanks, Nancy. Good morning. And do you want to say anything in regards to this one?
Nick laid it out exactly. You know, we met yesterday. I think we had a great, great meeting, worked through one kind of remaining site issue, and I think it can be resolved really quickly.
Right. Perfect. So again, everyone, this is 10-22-S and 76-22-Z. Because of it being a little bit different, we're going to continue one month to May 20, 2022, and no further notice will be given. All right. 11-22-S.
Chairman, that's also one of my cases, Nick Fatikas, for the record.
Great. Hey, Nick. Okay, so we have that this has to be continued because of the failure to file the variation to reduce MOA. Can you address this one?
Yeah, so I really would like the opportunity to talk this one through. We submitted through the normal process for zoning review back at the end of 2021. The Department of Planning and Development issued a denial letter for special use. This case involves a proposed expansion of an accessory retail store to an existing gas station. We're not changing the size of the gas station in terms of the square footage of the lot. We're not changing or increasing the number of fuel pumps that operate at the station. This matter was previously before the board but continued by the department because of planning, site plan issues. And we found out yesterday that the city now wants us to file a companion variation. I reached out to Commissioner Murphy yesterday when we learned that the additional request was required and asked him to confirm based on these facts that it's an existing and operating gas station, whether a lot area reduction was in fact required when the station itself is not changing. And Commissioner Murphy said he was going to do some internal review and get back to us. Being that this case has already been now, this will be continued twice at the city's request, and the fact that the denial letter that we supposedly were not... That wasn't filed, wasn't even issued until yesterday. We are asking for the shortest continuance possible. This is just, it's a unique situation. I get it. People make mistakes, but we're in a position where we're just being delayed from hearing, and we just want to try and shortcut that.
And Nancy, you want to address this one as well? Thank you.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, this is an unfortunate circumstance where when this went through plan review, initially, it was missed that the lot area was below the 20,000-square-foot minimum requirement. And unfortunately, it was just caught as recently as yesterday. So you know, the timing, everything is really unfortunate. With respect to the continuance, you know, I would actually need to defer to, you know, Victor, who has better expertise into terms of when he gets the variation application.
It's a notice requirement issue.
Yeah, how it can get, how quickly it can get on to an agenda. That's beyond my purview.
Yeah, so and again, apologies to everyone involved. Because of the notice requirements, this is going to be, the soonest this can be is June. We've got a... It's a short, since we're late in the month on this meeting, it's really close to May also. So, Nick, we've got to put this June 17, 2022.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. And again, this is calendar number 11-22-S, and it will be heard on June 17, 2022. No further notice will be given. Okay, how about 45-22-S? And this is a... This is at Chipotle at 1615 Northwestern.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the board as well. Thank you. I promise to keep this all related to the continuance. And I do want to extend my gratitude to Ms. Radzovich as well as Mr. Higgins in CDOT for their ongoing review and consideration of this proposal. Towards that end, I'm not objecting. It's my understanding that there's no outstanding deliverables on our end. We have produced everything that's been requested, but just that the Department of Transportation has not yet had an opportunity to review the latest submissions. So we wouldn't object to a one-month continuance. I have had some communications with Mr. Higgins at CDOT with regard to that type of continuance. I do understand as well your policy, as it appears, for two-month continuances for continued cases. But for this one, I think we've produced quite a bit. It's been under review since January 6. We're happy to expedite everything. We're actually meeting with CDOT next week, as early as next week, to talk through everything. I'm super excited about that. I think that will be a more efficient way of finishing up this one. We're very open to any modifications that CDOT may desire. Like I said, we've kind of responded to everything within four days every time it's been requested. So I'm super hopeful. I would love to guarantee that we could do this in a month. Time actually is truly of the essence here. There's been three other businesses that have had to opt out of this site due to delays, and I just would hate to see a fourth one have to. So with... We very, very, very respectfully request a one-month continuance, but certainly would defer to the board.
Sure. I'm wondering, is anyone from CDOT on the call?
Good morning. Charles Raisner, CDOT.
Great. Hi, Charles. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Sarah, and thank you as well. CDOT does have some concerns about pedestrian safety and comfort. We would also like to make sure that there's no negative impact to transit, the Western Bus. We have some concerns about queuing onto the public way. We have some concerns about queuing onto the public way, those concerns would be something that would come up with any drive-through, but since this is like an innovative, new type of design, and there's no order board on site, CDOT has a few extra questions. We're also wondering a little bit about loading and trip generation, so I'm looking forward to having a meeting with Sarah, where we can hopefully hash out some more details.
Great. Okay, thank you very much, and I'm just, I'm just looking, so we've got to put this in June because of where we're at right now. But hopefully that, you know, just gives everyone just ample enough time with the short gap to the May meeting to sort this out, so, again, this is 45-22-S, and we'll continue to June 17th, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Charles.
Yep, thank you both, thanks. Okay, is anyone on for calendar number 49-22?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Tom Moore.
You hear me? Yep, we got you.
So, this is a gas station that's been there for 30 or more years and working fine, it has an unsightly shipping container where it does its storage next to it, and he just wanted to add 700 square feet to take the storage inside and get rid of the shipping container. The planning department wants him to do triple the arc, things that will triple the architectural and engineering costs, and move curb cuts, and add 60% landscaping, and really make the whole thing, from his point of view, economically not verifiable. And I don't know if you know this, but in the last, even more recently, we've been told that you can't even go to the plant, to the zoning board, unless you first go to the planning commission, and I really wonder if the board's authorities and being, to decide isn't being usurped here. But any case, I will continue to see if I can find a middle ground on this one, and I would ask for a continuance.
Okay. Okay, great. Yes, and this will be a, this will be a two-month until June. Did anyone, Nancy, did you want to say anything on this one?
Sure. After, when this was continued the first time, we actually met together and we talked about the types of improvements that E P D and CDOT were looking for. But the biggest challenge at this point is that we still don't have a code compliant plan, and until we get a code compliant landscape plan, even just, even if we can work through some of the other issues, we just can't move forward, so, you know, we are absolutely 100% open to working with the client.
Okay, great, so again, everyone, this is 49-22-S. We'll continue to June 17th, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we've got a withdrawing applicant, so 67-22-S, is anyone on for this matter?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, this is Mike Noonan, attorney for the applicant Tri-City Foods of Illinois.
Hey, Mike.
Hello, so we are here, we'd like to withdraw this application, we've worked with DPD on some different changes to the site plan, and in the course of doing so, we've scaled back the renovation to no longer need a special use for the proposed renovations, so we'd like to withdraw.
Okay, great, we are formally withdrawing that on the record, it's calendar number 67-22-S has been withdrawn.
Great, thank you, and thanks to Steph for working with us on this one.
Yep.
Have a good weekend.
Thanks, Mike, you too.
Yep, bye-bye.
Okay. That was the list that we had in front of us, so are there anyone, any other matters on that are requesting continuances or withdrawals? Again, just raise your hand if your matter is requesting a continuance or a withdrawal. I see someone with their hand raised, S W- question mark, you can go ahead and speak.
Oh, okay, can you hear me?
Yep, you can hear you.
Hi, thank you for acknowledging me, my name is Shannon Waterfield. I'm requesting a delay on Agenda Item 8122Z.
Okay.
This request for a variant should be delayed indefinitely until the Office of Inspector General has completed the requested investigation into the process on how and why 1810 Wells was quickly and undemocratically de-landmarked. This project is an example of why the citizens of Chicago have lost trust in those who pretend to represent stakeholders. The landmarking of this building was presented and completed with very little public knowledge or input, and basically it was a backroom deal, and now all contributing buildings and landmark districts are targets for demolition and development. One has to ask why at the same time was the Department of Development's Commission of Landmarks aggressively attempting to landmark a huge area in Pilsen, and was secretly de-landmarking this building in an existing landmark district? The most appropriate question here is who benefits, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. So, that's a little bit outside of our purview, we're going to be hearing this one today, I know we had a bit of conversation on this last month as well, when we granted a continuance. Just because you spoke, I want to give the attorneys the opportunity to speak, but again, it should just be addressing the request for continuance, so, is, I believe Katrina McGuire is the attorney, is Katrina on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here, good morning, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes, Katrina McGuire on behalf of the applicant here. We would absolutely object to any further continuance here, and as you, Mr. Chairman, noted, the scope of the objection is far outside the scope of what's before this board today.
Yep. Okay, great, so we're going to be, we're going to be hearing that matter, and of course, we've got objectors signed up for that matter, and you'll be given time to speak during, during the, the, when the matter is called, so again, only if we have anybody on requesting any more continuances or withdrawals on other matters, feel free to raise your hand. Okay, I'm promoting a Susan, Susan Boggi. Susan, you're unmuted, you're allowed to speak.
Continuance on the same matter. Based on the fact that.
Hey, ma'am, ma'am, we're getting a lot of feedback, can you make sure you're only signed on to one device? Sorry, ma'am, we can't, we can't hear you.
Chairman, she's logged in as Susan Boggi and as Alice.
Okay, ma'am, so if you want to speak, you've got to log out of one of those, because we can't hear you at all.
Alice, I will log out.
Okay, someone signed in as Alice that. Okay, if not, we'll just go into regular call, we're going to be hearing that matter today.
Is here, Chairman, she's speaking, but we cannot hear her.
Oh, okay, Alice, sorry, ma'am, we can't hear you at all, I didn't even know you were on, your sound seems to not be connected. Okay, we're going to start with regular matter, the objectors on that matter are able to, of course, request continuance during the matter, but unless something comes up that's totally unforeseen, we will be hearing that today, as we have requests, or we have granted a continuance in the past. So with that, let's go to our call for the day. So if we go to a special use extension, calendar number 436-20-S.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Moore on behalf of the applicant.
Morning, Tom.
And, I'm not sure, Sean Dice, who is the, one of the owners, should be on, he was going to be on. In case you wanted to ask him questions.
Yep, we've got Sean, or Sean, Sean Dice being promoted to panelist right now.
Thank you, so.
We've got the third ward on. So, Brian, either, after Tom gives an intro, you can either speak at the beginning or the end, it's up to you.
Beginning of your breath, thank you.
Great.
So, this is a case that we appeared in front of the board some time ago, and the board granted, I think it was in a little over a year ago, February, and the board granted a special use to allow this established bar in Bronzeville to have a outdoor garden, and they pursued it, and, but it was during COVID, and you know, months would go by between corrections and things, and they are literally, at this point, the architects have done everything, and it's into the city to be finalized, now, any correction can get more corrections, but they really think they are at the end. In February, we timely filed this extension, but at the time, the establishment had some other problems, and the alderman asked to continue this request until today. And those other problems have, I'm told, have been resolved, and the city and the, and the establishment have worked out an abatement program, and they've made their peace with the commander and everybody, and my understanding is, I had received an email that the alderman's office is now satisfied with that, and so we're back in front of the the board asking for a brief extension. How long we need, we don't know, so we'd rather have more time than less time, but we believe we're near the end of this process.
Great, thanks, and I want to go ahead to Brian Friedman, Brian, can you just introduce yourself and us where you're in?
Of course, Brian Friedman, Third Ward Alderman, Pat Dowell's office.
Great, thank you so much, and to the extent, app, hold you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, go right ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Moore explained the situation very well, the abatement plan has been agreed to by the alderman's office and the district commander. We just want to make sure that the applicant and Sean you know, informs the abatement plan moving forward, and we no longer have an objection to this item, thank you.
Great, thank you, and Tom, just for a little process, the extension would get an additional year from the date stamp on the original resolution.
Well, we don't really need that much time, but.
It's the process, I just wanted to explain the process, yeah.
We will act precipitously and get it done.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration, and thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to take one out of order for religious purposes, it's Orthodox Easter, so we are going to go to calendar number 128-22-Z. So Sylvia Micus, let us know when you're on.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, thank you very much for your consideration on behalf of my client and myself, who are both celebrating Greek Orthodox Easter, so thank you for moving us up on the agenda.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Sylvia Micus, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Taft, Statineus, and Hollister, located at 111 East Whacker Drive in Chicago, Illinois, I'm here today on behalf of 2426 Augusta LLC, the applicant and owner of the subject property located at 2426 West Augusta Boulevard, I hear with me today to my left is Angelo Lescaris, he is the manager of the applicant. The subject property is substandard in size, as it measures 24 feet by 124.24 feet, for a total area of 2,981.76 square feet, the property is located in an RT4 district. The subject property is currently improved with a vacant and dilapidated one-story, single-family home with enclosed porch and a detached wooden frame garage, the existing single-family home is set back approximately 36 and a half feet from its front property line, approximately 0.29 feet from its rear property line, and 2.24 feet from its west property line, and it slightly encroaches about 0.14 feet onto the property to the east. The applicant plans to demolish and replace the existing single-family home with a new three-story, three-unit residential building with an open porch, and three onsite exterior surface parking spaces located at the rear of the property. The applicant's application seeks a variation to reduce the minimum lot area from the required 3,000 square feet to 2,081.76 square feet, in order to redevelop the subject property with the proposed three-unit residential building. But for the minimal reduction of 19 square feet from the required minimum lot area requirement, the applicant's proposed building complies with the RT4 zoning district in regards to floor area ratio, height, property setbacks, and rear yard open space. Again, I'd like to introduce Angelo Lescaris, manager of the applicant and owner, and Mr. Lescaris, please state your name and.
Sorry, I just wanted to tune in, if anyone is here to object on this matter, 128-22-Z, this specific matter, please raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to swear in Mr. Lescaris?
Yeah, Mr. Lescaris, will you state your name and address, please?
Angelo Lescaris. 433 North Prospect in Park Ridge, Illinois.
Thank you, and do swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Excellent apology.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lescaris is manager of the applicant, you purchased the property in 2021, correct? And your decision to purchase the subject property was based on the existing multifamily pattern and development on the block, correct? Specifically, the two, three-unit buildings located directly adjacent to the subject property at 2428 and 2430 West Augusta, which are three-unit residential buildings. However, after acquiring the subject property and filing for the necessary billing permits, you were advised that a variation would be required in order to secure approval for the reduction of the 19 square feet in minimum lot area. Okay, and isn't it true that my office filed a FOIA request which confirmed that the three-unit buildings located at 2428 and 2430 West Augusta, which had the same lot size, secured, so approval of similar minimum lot area reduction in square footage in 2005 via administrative adjustment filings? And isn't it true that my office confirmed with the Bureau of Zoning that although this similar relief was approved via administrative adjustment in 2005, such relief must be sought through variation, and that is why we are here today before the board? And isn't it true that but for this request for minimum lot area reduction, you are not seeking any additional relief in the? you are not seeking any additional relief in the form of a variation from this board? And as you're aware, TAF submitted findings of fact and your signed affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. And if you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavit? And finally, Mr. Lescaris, if strict compliance of the minimum lot area were enforced, resulting in a two-unit building with each unit being larger than what is proposed, such units would not be marketable, given the predominance of smaller units in similarly situated three and four-unit buildings in the immediate area? Thank you, Mr. Lescaris. And I'm going to turn to our project architect, who is via phone, Mr. Dominikowski.
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to swear in our project architect.
Hello, Mr. Dominikowski, will you please state your name and address?
Mark Dominikowski, 26038 West Indian Trail Road, Berryton, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And Mark, you were retained by the applicant as a licensed architect to prepare architectural plans for the applicant's proposed three-story, three-unit residential building at 2426 West Augusta Boulevard, correct?
That is correct.
And you are familiar with the property, which is slightly substandard in both width and size and length? And but for an insufficient lot area of 19 square feet, the proposed residential building complies with the RT4 zoning requirements, correct?
That is correct.
And as you're aware, TAF submitted findings of fact, architectural plans, and your signed affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. And if you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with these findings of fact, architectural plans, and affidavit?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. And now we will turn to our land planner, Mr. George Kissel. George, are you on?
I am.
Great. And Chairman, if you'd like to swear in, Mr. Kissel.
Hey, George, how are you? Please state your name and address, please.
George Kissel, President of Kessel Associates Offices at 141 West Jackson in Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout today's proceedings?
I do.
And Mr. Kissel, you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of the proposed variation to reduce the required minimum lot area from 3,000 square feet to 2,981 square feet in order to build a new three-story, three-unit residential building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings, and conclusions? And is that report contained in the materials submitted to the board and admitted into evidence?
Yes, it is.
And Mr. Kissel, if asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your report, specifically that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of applicant's proposed variation?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we respectfully request your favorable consideration of the application for variation. We are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions from the board?
I just have a quick question. I'm not clear what the hardship is exactly.
Actually, the hardship is the lot. The lot is slightly substandard in size. And kind of the practical difficulty is that, right now, it would only allow two units to be built and on, from a marketing perspective, given the predominance of the supply of inventory on that, on that subject block, it would prove difficult in which to basically sell or to run the units.
Would you have the minimum lot area if it was a standard-sized lot?
Yes, we would. It's, yeah, it's just small by 19 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
And a quick question. This is Commissioner Toya. What are the lot? Is this the only lot on the street that is a short lot, or is the whole street like this?
No, actually, as I mentioned, the lots directly to our west are also short. Those two lots, it received administrative adjustments. And so those also are the same shortly, you know, a little bit substandard. And actually, Mr. Kissel would be able to testify in terms of how the lots on that block were subdivided to this, to this size, I believe, over maybe a century ago. George, if you would like to address that question.
Sure, these lots, so this part of the city was subdivided in 1881, long before the city of Chicago had a zoning ordinance, which was first enacted in 1923. So by and large, the entire context here, while all of the lots are substandard, are generally developed with three flats, you know, slightly smaller than the standard 25 by 125 lot. As we know, the R4 district is sort of designed for three flats on a 25 by 125 lot, given what the lot area per dwelling unit requirement is, which is 1,000 per unit. So when you get to a 24-foot and one slightly smaller reduction, you're just underneath that threshold. So in order to comply with what the context calls for here, which is basically three flats, you have to request the variation for the reduction in the minimum lot area.
All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll take this calendar matter, 128-22-Z, under consideration, and have an enjoyable Easter.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful weekend, everyone. Enjoy the weather.
Okay, we're gonna start at the beginning now of regular call. So this brings us back to calendar number 104-22-S at 725 West 111. Before we get going on this, I'll say if there's anybody here to object on 104-22-S, please raise your hand. We'll get you promoted. And the Department of Planning and Development will read the recommendation on this matter. So Nancy, if you're here.
I am.
Great, can you go ahead and read the recommendation?
Do you need to swear me in for this?
Yeah, that's right. You've spoken, but haven't been sworn in. Okay, so please state your name and your role.
Absolutely. Nancy Razovich, Assistant Commissioner for the Zoning Bureau and the Department of Planning and Development.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon barber shop. The department finds this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon barber shop will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon barber shop is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have Cortez Prince here?
Yes.
Hi, Cortez. Can you, just to start, state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Cortez Prince. Address is 725 West 111 Street, Chicago, 628.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, what brings you here today?
Actually, my shop has been overviewed for zoning, and I'm trying to get my state license, my city license for my zoning, before I can open up a lot of, like, you know, businesses and stuff like that, like bringing jobs to the community. And also Larry Barber College is up the street, and they also trying to, you know, I can't do anything, basically, because of, I don't have a city license yet.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about your background within the hair industry and how you plan to run this salon, should you get permitted?
Okay, so I actually been cutting hair over here for 10 years. So I'm pretty much with the community. Everybody loves me. I've been here for a minute. I've been cutting around. I actually have the Barber College up the streets that's trying to do hours with me, but I can't get the hours. Pretty much, you know, we trying to do back to school. Went back to school, come, we give out backpacks and stuff like that. We basically for the community. And it's actually like the big top on hosted, and I'm well-respected over here. Everybody knows me.
Okay, and I see a few stations. So do you intend to hire people?
Yes.
Okay. And what will that vetting process be like? Do you think you'll take students from the school, or how will you vet their experience?
With their experience, I would just basically teach them what I was getting done, like when I first started 10 years ago, basically, like, you know, to help people, teach people how to cut hair and everything. It's like a skill, basically, to bring to the community.
Great. Okay, and what are your intended hours for this?
It's basically from nine o'clock to nine at night.
Monday, Monday through Sunday, or?
No, Monday through Friday, seven days.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Prince? Okay. Mr. Prince, are you frozen, or am I frozen?
No, I'm here.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I get paranoid with these virtual hearings. I think that's all the questions we had for you, so we will take this under consideration.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Real quick, do you have a Miss Jennifer Kelly on as well?
I actually had to head out. I was actually, they told me nine o'clock. I've been sitting since nine, so I had to, you know, head out, but she's not available at the moment.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. We'll take this under consideration.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks for doing. All right, we're gonna go to calendar number 105-22-S. At 1851 West Chicago Avenue, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation when everyone gets settled. And if anyone is here to object on 105-22-S, please raise your hand, and we'll get you promoted. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art/tattoo facility.
There's Joe.
Great, is that, is that Robin King?
Yes.
Okay, great. Robin, just give me, give me one second. Okay, Robin, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, hi, it's Robin King, 955 West Oakley Boulevard, 3N, Chicago Avenue.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
I do.
Okay, great. Then we'll get also, I know you have an expert on Joe Ryan. You know, I'll go ahead and just swear Joe in right now. And if any questions we have for you, you think he's better to answer, we'll go ahead. So Joe, can you state your name and address?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Thank you very much. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, and we acknowledge your expertise.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Robin, what brings you here today?
I'm looking to get a special use permit to be able to open a private studio in West Town. My husband and I, we actually own a condo nearby, and I love this neighborhood so much. I feel safe. I've been tattooing for 22 years. 16 of them have been here in Chicago in the Bucktown area in reputable shops. I've been working by appointment only over the last 10 years during, like, large-scale Japanese work. A lot of my clients are with me for years at a time, and often, they do multiple pieces. My approach to my consultation process has kind of been evolving over the last couple of years, and it requires a little bit more time than what a typical consult would take with my clients. I like to get to know them a little bit better, and then that way I can base my designs on who they are rather than, you know, just picking an image. And then, I don't know, it's just more meaningful that way. I was realizing I can't do this in a multi-artist shop. It's really important for me, for my clients, to feel safe and comfortable, to be able to interact in that way in, you know, a safe environment. So I figured it was time for me to pursue opening up my own shop.
Okay, great, thank you. And do you intend to have employees?
No, just me.
Just you, the operation, just you. Okay, so is it, can you just tell us a little bit about, like, is it appointment-only? What do the hours look like? And those types of logistical things?
Sure. It's appointment-only. Most of the time, I only work, like, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And it's like 12 to 4, super short hours. And that's pretty much it.
And to do this type of work, you need a bloodborne pathogen certificate? So you've got, you've got the certificate and?
Yep, every year.
Great.
Every year, we have to renew it, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board for Robin King? Mr. Ryan, anything you want to add here?
No, Chairman, I prepared a report that examined all the criteria the board needs to grant special use and found that this proposed use meets all that criteria.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll take this under consideration. And we appreciate you coming in today, and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we are going to jump one ahead. We're gonna hear 106 at the end of regular call. So let's go to calendar number 107-22-Z at 1407 North Horn. If anyone is on to object for 107-22-Z, please just raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. All right, let's see. I'm promoting a marquee right now. And Mark, just to be clear, before we get started, are you on, are you on to object? Are you on with the applicant, or?
I don't think I have any objections, but I wanted to hear what it is.
Sure. Good. So you know what, either way, we'll run this with our objection process, just so you can kind of determine. So what we do here is, the applicant will put on their case in chief, during which the board will ask questions of the applicant, then we'll move over to you. You can either say no objection, and we'll move on right away, or you can ask some questions. Then we'll turn to the applicant for closing. Board will ask questions the whole time. So with that, do we have Donald Wilson on?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Donald, and you are the applicant, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. And we've got an Andy Tanucci and a Gavin Campbell, is that right? Yep. Okay, so just to clarify roles at the beginning, Andy, what is your role?
I'm the architect on the project.
Perfect. Okay, if we have, is Gavin on?
We were expecting him to be on. Gavin's the neighbor to the north, the most directly affected.
Okay, so is Gavin gonna be on in support?
Yes, we expect Gavin to be here in support. He's submitted a letter, which we have included as part of our packet, and we expected him to be here in support today.
Great. Okay, we'll see, we'll see if Gavin shows up. If not, we've got some support on the record, I know, in the application. So with that, we'll start with Mr. Wilson. Don, can you state your name and address, please?
Donald Wilson, presently residing at 550 West Dickens.
Okay, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Okay, tell us a little bit about what brings you here today.
I'm the owner of 1407 North Horn. My, my family, well, between my blended family will have six kids, and we are looking forward to improving the house and moving into the neighborhood. we are uh looking forward to uh improving the house and moving into the neighborhood.
Okay, so um and just to be, maybe this can go to Andy as well. So um you're requesting some setback reductions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so can you please tell us a little bit about what what renovations you'll be making that require the setbacks? Um and and Andy, I'll I'll swear you in, because you might be helpful on this. Um so Andy, can you state?
Chairman Newton, you just muted yourself. My name is Andy Tanucci, Principal at Woodhouse Tanucci Architects. Uh my address is two thirty West Superior, sixth floor, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five four.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
Okay, great. Um yeah, if you could give us a little bit of a breakdown of what we're doing here.
Yeah, sure. So let me uh let me make the introduction here to the to the project. So we're uh here introducing this project at fourteen oh seven North Horn. As you can see from the images, uh built in the late eighteen hundreds, it is a historic property and old Victorian home, kind of a canonical uh Whopper Park House, as you can see from that corner view at Horn in Schiller. Uh the house has a similarly similarly historic coach house, which you can see at the rear of the property in the nineteen seventies. Uh the property was split into two properties. Um so this project seeks to to reconnect these two um kind of bringing them together in perpetuity, which uh both we in the neighborhood and Land and Landmarks Department is all very excited about. As Don mentioned, uh he and his partner and family of six children are uh looking forward to moving into the house. Um and despite the stately nature of the house, it is uh short on bedrooms and uh home office space. So that brings us to the project proper. Um by right, by zoning right, we're allowed to add roughly seventy five hundred square feet to the property, and this uh proposal is uh really only adding four thousand square feet or less than we are allowed to by right. Um due to the historic nature of the house, and if you flash back to one of the images from the southwest corner or the aerial, the front yard, which is actually the side yard, yes, it's perfect. So this area in the foreground right of the house uh is the kind of historic side yard, front yard. And our design solution, any design solution would would really never seek to add square footage into this, uh nor would city landmarks uh allow it, nor would the Whicker Park Historic District. And this really is then our hardship. The area entirely within the setback is a place where no one should ever build so that we can maintain the historic nature of this house, the historic nature of the neighborhood. So our proposal seeks to add these uh four thousand square feet to the north, which is the side yard technically, and also the space between the house and the coach house, so that would be to the right hand side of of this image here between the house and coach house. In two thousand and nine, uh and as you can see from the front of the house, if you flip back a few pictures, the the horn side of the house, there was a uh the zoning board of appeals, this commission approved a one story addition to the property, and our proposal is truly only seeking to build on top of that. So this addition uh there, this is perfect. So the image on the left, uh we're only proposing to build on top of what you can see is a one story addition that encroaches into the setback fact. So we're we're not encroaching any further into the setback than this addition did so in in two thousand and nine. Um yeah, here, perfect. So we're really just only building on top of this space here, on top of that one story box that you can see below. Uh so just continuing that uh addition up. And then and then secondly, the connection between the two parcels is just pushed back against that that new that requested north setback to be practically invisible, again, as to not impede the historic view or nature of the of the house in Coach House. Um we worked uh we worked both with the uh Whicker Park uh uh committee, as well as the uh City Landmarks Department to develop this solution. Uh through the P R C process, uh we received approval from uh Chicago Landmarks, and uh through the working with the committee, we have their support as well. Um we have two letters that we've included with this packet, uh including the one from Gavin Campbell, the neighbor uh to the north. I don't know if he made it to the call yet, but um you have his letter as you noted.
Yeah, Ga- Gavin just joined by phone.
Okay, great, let's um uh let's get Gavin on since he took the time to come. Um Gavin, you can press star nine if you're if you're you're on phone and you should be able to speak. Okay, maybe as we um we sort out that, um any questions from the board at this moment? Is Andy, you know, question for me, just as I I look again at the images, can you describe like if there is the connection to the coach house, how how that functions?
Yeah, can we flash to the plan? Uh here, this plan is perfect.
Yep.
Um, okay, so uh the, in the proposed renovation, the coach house is going to become the garage to the property, so we'll be entering the property from the alley into the garage. And then the the connector is just a one story connector. You're actually looking at the plan of the roof of the connector, but the 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 lower floor plan is really the internal connection between the two uh car garage and the house proper. And you can see the pushback, the push to the north is so that it steps back from that southern historic facade of both the uh historic house on the left and the coach house on the right.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Then we'll we'll let Gavin Gavin talk and go to Mr. Ye.
Yeah, here's the floor plan. Shows the garage and the connection.
No, no, you're fine. Um okay, Gavin, um I think you're unmuted. Um are you there?
Yeah, I was star six, not star nine, as it turns out.
I'm constantly confusing people. Um so uh can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, it's Gavin Campbell, and I live at fourteen seventeen North Horn in Chicago.
Great, and do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, so what brings you here today?
Uh I'd like to register my support for uh what Don is doing on the uh in his property generally there, and and specifically on the on the north side of his uh his property that directly uh abuts the south south end of my property.
Okay, good. Great, thanks for, thank you for coming and expressing uh your support.
Perfect, yeah, but I hope it hope it gets approved.
Great, thank you. Alright, let's move um, let's move to to Mr. Ye. And Mr. Ye, again, I'll I'll swear you in, and you can either state no objection, ask questions, um really communicate as you please. So will you state your name and address, please?
Uh my name is Mark Ye at fourteen oh six North Horn.
Thank you, and do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
Um I support this project.
Okay. Great, thank you very much, Mr. Ye. Okay, so then we will move back um to the board, and I just want to give the board one final opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll take this under consideration.
Yeah, this is Jolene Saw. I do have a question just to clarify. Um are are both the connection and the addition requiring the variation, or is it just the the addition going up? I'm just trying to see what's triggering the variation request.
It's not, yeah, it's not a height, it's just the both the
I know it's not a height, but I I just want to distinguish between the connection to the coach house and then the addition on top of the existing.
They both in, they both encroach into the uh setback and require the the variance.
Okay, is it um is the rear setback for both or one of the two?
Rear setback is just for the connector.
Okay. And the side is for the?
The side is for the addition and the connector. It should be noted that the coach house already, the existing coach house already extends into those setbacks.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, any other questions from the board? Alright, um everyone, thank you very much for your time, and we will take this under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, enjoy your weekend.
Do the same.
Okay, let's move now to calendar numbers one oh eight dash twenty two dash Z and one oh nine dash twenty two dash Z. If anyone is here on the call to object to those matters, please just raise your hand and we um will have you promoted. So with that, I think we have Councilor Pat Turner on this one.
Okay, I think I'm uh unmuted. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Turner. I represent the applicant thirty three thirty five uh dash thirty three thirty seven North Sheffield LLC. Um the subject property is, as you can imagine, uh located at thirty three thirty five Dorsh dash thirty seven North Sheffield, and consists of an oddly shaped lot containing approximately five thousand five hundred ninety four square feet. The property is currently vacant. The applicant would like to construct a new four story residential building containing a total of seven dwelling units on site uh and parking for seven cars. There will be two duplex units located on the basement and first floors. The second and third floors will contain two simplex units each, and the fourth wall, fourth floor will consist of one unit, considered a penthouse. The applicant is seeking variations to reduce the front setback from the required nine point two three feet to three feet, the rear setback from the required thirty three point five six feet to twenty five point two three feet, and to reduce the rear yard open space from the required two hundred ninety three point six seven square feet to zero. Um with me, hopefully, I have Adam Steinberg, who is a manager of the applicant, and the architect Christopher Bone. I think we have. Are you with us, gentlemen?
Yep, I see, I I see Adam Steinberg um raising their hand.
Okay, um and if Mr. Bone is there, uh Chairman, could you swear in the witnesses?
Yeah, absolutely. So Adam, um let's start with you. Will you please state your name and address? Adam, you're you're just muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so sorry about that. Adam Steinberg, eighteen thirty five North Walcott, Chicago, six oh six two two.
Great, thank you, and do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Um alright, Chris Bone, will you state your name and address?
Uh Christopher Bone, uh twenty four fifty three South Archer Avenue, Chicago.
Thank you, and do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Uh yes, I do.
Um and we've got Robert Metz on as well. Um so Robert, will you state your name and address? So Robert, you're muted.
Thank you very much for that, Chairman. Uh Robert Metz, one twelve Oak Terrace, Lake Bluff, Illinois.
Thank you, and do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Sorry for omitting you, Robert. Didn't realize you were joining us, so.
I I I yeah, I'm sorry, I actually, I received uh an invite to uh be a witness, and I didn't know whether I should accept it or not, so I will stay silent unless you need me further.
Thank you, Robert. Um Mr. Chairman, uh members of the board, again, good morning. Uh at this point, I would like to call uh as my first witness, Mr. Bone. So Chris, um you are the architect on this project. Is that correct?
Right.
And the property is an oddly shaped lot, and it has a north side property line measuring one oh two point one three feet and a south side property line measuring one hundred and twenty one point six two feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And it is shorter than a standard city lot measuring typically one twenty five feet deep, correct?
Uh that's correct.
This one is all what usual because it has a private drive owned by the C T A that abuts the rear of the property rather than a public alley. Is that true?
Yes.
In in your opinion, this property is unique.
Um it is unique, yes.
And working with such a unique property poses hardships from an architectural standpoint, is that correct?
Yes.
The property is currently vacant, right, Chris?
Uh yes, it is.
And the plan is to develop the property with a new four story residential building as I previously described, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um the building will have a a private rooftop deck for the residents. Uh is that?
Yes.
And and in order to do this project, we are seeking variations um that I previously described, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then due to the oddly shaped lot and the short depths, it would be difficult to comply with the front setback, rear setback, and rear yard open space requirements. Is that your opinion?
Uh yes, that is.
In fact, had the property been a standard city lot that measured fifty by one twenty five, the required rear setback, front setback, and rear open uh spaces would have been provided, is that true?
Uh yes, we would have been able to do that, yes.
Uh again, but due to the neat condition of the property, it was difficult to provide these setbacks necessitating the requested relief, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh many of the improvements on this side of the block are situated toward the front property line, true?
True.
And thus, the the building will be in line with the improvements on the block, is that true?
Uh yes.
Uh despite waiving the required rear yard open space, the building will have a private deck as previously mentioned, thus providing usable onsite open space, is that correct?
Uh yes.
And then, Chris, in your professional opinion, strict compliance with the regulations and standards of the zoning ordinance would create practical difficulties and hardships for the proposed building, since the property is oddly shaped and on a substandard lot. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And again, in your professional opinion, these prac- practical difficulties and particular hardships are due to a unique circumstance, once again, since the property is is on a narrow and substandard lot. Correct?
Yes.
These unique circumstances are not generally applicable to other similarly situated properties, is that correct?
That's correct.
Again, in your professional opinion, the proposed variations are not based exclusively upon a desire to make more money out of the project. Is that true?
That's true, yes.
And again, in your professional opinion, the practical difficulty or particular hardship was not created by any person presently having an interest in the property, is that true?
That's true.
Um if the variations were granted, in your professional opinion, uh they will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. Is that your opinion?
Uh yes, it is.
Uh also, in your professional opinion, the proposed variations will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property or substantially increased congestion in the public streets. Is that also your opinion?
Uh yes, it is.
And then finally, in your professional opinion, the proposed variations will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety, is that true?
That's true, yes.
And Chris, you signed an affidavit in support of uh these variations applications, correct?
That's right.
And if you if you were to continue to testify, you would do so consistent with the facts, opinions, and conclusions contained in that affidavit, is that true?
That's true.
Uh Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have no further questions for Mr. Bowman, with wel- welcome questions by the board.
Any questions for Mr. Bone? The counselor, you can keep going, and we'll we'll circle back with questions.
Okay, so at this point, uh I would like to call uh my next witness, and I think it's gonna be Adam Steinberg uh testifying at this point. So Adam, um you are a manager of the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
And you heard and agree with the testimony of Mr. Bone that just testified, is that true?
True.
Uh and again, you're proposing to build a uh a new four story residential building containing seven dwelling units, onsite parking for seven cars, and a private roof deck on top of the building, is that correct?
Correct.
And once again, the property is on the oddly shaped lot as we previously discussed with Mr. Bone, correct?
Correct.
The, uh, the CTA owns a private road which abuts the rear of the property rather than a public alley, is that true?
True.
And these conditions, along with the oddly shaped block, propose a hardship in trying to comply with the required front and rear setbacks as well as the required rear yard open space, is that true?
True.
And as a result, you are seeking the subject variations, correct?
Correct.
In fact, had the property been a standard city lot, as we discussed with Mr. Bone, you would have been able to comply with the aforementioned setbacks, is that true?
True.
Due to the condition of the property, it made it difficult to comply with those setbacks, is that true?
True.
Even though you are seeking to waive the rear yard open space requirement, the building will have a rooftop deck for residents, is that true?
True.
And the roof deck will provide the necessary usable space, open space for those residents, is that true?
True.
Again, since the property is oddly shaped and not as deep as a standard city lot, it was more efficient to have a connecting stairway to the porch and garage deck, is that true?
True.
Okay, as far as the financial analysis, the cost of the land was approximately $625,000, is that true?
True.
And the estimated cost of construction is roughly $2.6 million, is that correct?
Correct.
And that you anticipate selling the units for a total of $3.85 million, is that correct?
Correct.
And based on these figures, the anticipated reasonable return on investment will be approximately 17%, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, Adam, again, the same zoning board back in 2007 approved variations, similar variations, for a little different development, which would be, would have been a four-story, eight-dwelling unit building with a front yard of six foot instead of the required 13.43 feet, rear setback of 26 feet instead of the required 33.57 feet, and north and side yards of zero each instead of the combined side yards of 10 feet, is that true?
True.
So the, the, there was a resolution passed by, passed by this very board granting that relief back in 2007, correct?
Correct.
And construction of that project never took place, correct?
Correct.
Because of a variety of reasons, I would imagine, correct?
Correct.
Adam, you signed an affidavit summarizing your testimony, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact, is that correct?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify in this matter, you would testify consistent with the facts contained in your affidavit, is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have no further questions for Mr. Steinberg and would welcome questions by the board at this time.
Great. Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, it sounds like we have what we need here. Your option, if you want to get Mr. Metz on, but...
I don't think it's necessary. Adam, Robert, I appreciate you logging in. I don't want to take up any more of the precious, precious time of the board. I think there's a full agenda. So I think we're okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I thank you for your time. And in closing, we have reached out to Alderman Tunnies office, who has no issue with the proposed variations.
Great, okay. Thank you, everyone, for your time. We've got the info we need and we will take this under consideration.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Enjoy your weekends.
You too.
All right, let's move to calendar number 110-22-Z at 2708 North Albany. So Counselor Joseph Barbaro, let us know when you're ready. All right, I see, I see Mary Barbaro on, and Joseph. So Joseph, let's make sure that we have you. Can you, can you unmute, please? Joseph, I'm not getting your sound.
Mr. Barbaro, you were unmuted, but you muted yourself again, so now you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. I'm using a new computer, which I'm using for the first time today, so please bear with me.
No worries. Okay, so great, we've got everyone. I would, I just always say, if anyone is here to object on 110-22-Z, please raise your hand and we'll get you promoted as well. With that, Counselor, you can take it away.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, and members of the commission. My name is Joseph Barbaro. I am an attorney with Barbaro Law Group. I'm here representing the applicant, MJ Barr Holdings LLC, who is the sole owner of the property located at 2708 North Albany. In the interest of full disclosure, the sole member of MJ Barr Holdings LLC is Mary J. Barbaro, who is my wife. The property at 2708 was acquired by a contractor that my client frequently employs at a foreclosure sale and MJ Barr LLC purchased the property from that contractor in November of 2021. Property is currently zoned R3, was previously used as a two-flat. The property is in extremely poor condition. When it was initially purchased, my client drove the neighborhood and decided that a rehab would be a better fit in order to maintain the historic and architectural character of the property, despite the fact that she was advised by the contractor on the project that a rehab would be more difficult and more expensive. Original plans were submitted to the city by Helen Liptak, who I hope is also present here today. And the original plans provided for a 10-foot addition to the rear of the existing structure, which was rejected by the city. It was rejected because the basement was more than 50% above grade and therefore, the basement's square footage was included in the total square footage of the home despite the fact that the basement was also in horrible condition. The property has the enclosed rear porch that extends approximately eight feet from the rear of the brick portion of the building. That porch was erected by a prior owner without permits and that enclosure houses a rear wooden porch with stairs to the first and second floor, which are also in extremely poor condition. My client is seeking a variance to allow the increase of the existing non-conforming floor area in existence for 50 years, which is 3,705.42 square feet by 550 square feet, which totals 4,255.42 square feet for an increase of 14.8%, not to exceed 15% in order to allow the construction of a new rear two-story addition on an existing two-story, two-dwelling unit building and to de-convert that building to a single-family residence with a new detached two-car garage with a rooftop deck. In order to achieve that, we are asking, in essence, for a four-foot addition onto the existing structure. When I say existing structure, I mean also that portion of the structure, which, which enclosed, which is that enclosed porch area that houses the current stairs to the first and second floor. The project itself contemplates complete and total rehab of the building, including new electrical, plumbing, plumbing fixtures, HVAC ductwork, windows, drywall, appliances, trim doors, the front facade will be replaced. And the addition would be consistent with the, the building, when completed, would be consistent with other properties on the block, some of which will be greater and some less in the amount that, that our proposed four-foot extension would extend beyond the rear of the existing building. The purpose of the variance is basically to allow us to bring this building into the, into the 21st century. The property was constructed originally in the 1950s and at that time, there were very compartmentalized kitchens and very compartmentalized rooms. We want to open the property up and take those rickety old stairs and porches from the rear of the building that are in that enclosed area and move them inside. In order to do so, we lose a significant portion of the interior square footage, which if, if you look at the, I think it's 3.01, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry, 8.21, the middle drawing, which reflects the proposed first floor plan, you could see if we had to move those stairs in the width of the stairs and then eight additional feet, it would severely impact our family room and nearly begin to encroach on the kitchen area of this building, which would make it very difficult to market this building in today's market. The... And that's basically the hardship that we face here today. My client, again, just wants to bring the house in up to 2022 standards and my client will certainly preserve the architectural nature of the neighborhood, increase surrounding property values, and there'd be less traffic as we're going to do a deconversion to a single-family. And, Mr. Chairman, I do have two witnesses in support of my client's application. I don't know, I know that, that Mary is on, or I believe that Mary Barbaro is on, but I'm asking if Helen Liptak is on.
Yeah, let's see, I'd like to get Mary sworn in, since I know the relationship here is a little bit unique. But if we can, Mary is like named client. So Mary, can you state your name and address, please?
I'm Mary Barbaro, 9760 South Roberts Road in Payless Heights, Illinois.
Thank you very much. And you, as applicable, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, and I see Helen Liptak. Helen, if you want to mute, can you state your name and address as well?
It's Helen Liptak and it's 1247 117th Street, Lamont, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings as applicable?
I do.
Great, okay. I think we've got a lot of information on this, so I want to circle back with the board for questions. But Helen, can you confirm that everything that the counselor has said related to your support is true and add anything as you please?
Yes, everything was true except for the, the total addition was five foot six, but all the square footage is and all that is correct and the addition 15% or less than 15% is all correct. But that's the only, which it shows on the plan, the five foot.
I, I think what you're saying is the, it's, it's actually a four-foot addition, but it's five, six to the outside of the building.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Okay, good clarification, thank you. Okay, any questions from the board? All right, Counselor, I think we've got what we need here. So we'll, we'll take this under consideration and I thank everyone for your time today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Enjoy the weekend.
You too, bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, let's do one more double matter before taking a little break. So if we can please go to calendar number 111-22-S and 112-22-Z. If anyone here is to object on either of these calendar numbers, please just raise your hand, we'll get you promoted. I'm going to go ahead and read the special uses recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed five-story, 35-room hotel with ground floor and basement retail, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Neighborhood Little Italy, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the cover sheet-TSL plan, site plan, fifth floor plan, and roof plan dated January 31, 2022, with demolition plans, three sheets, lower level plan, second floor plan, and elevations, four sheets dated January 14, 2022, and with first floor plan and landscape plan dated February 4, 2022, all prepared by Von Weis Associates. So let's see if we have the Counselor, Mariah DeGrino.
I'm muted, I'm unmuted now. I'm here, thank you.
Great, okay, Counselor, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Mariah DeGrino from the law firm of DLA Piper located at 444 West Lake Street. We represent the applicant in this matter, Neighborhood Little Italy LLC. I'm joined today by Jonathan Gordon, manager of the applicant, Chip Von Weise, the project architect, and George Kissel of Oak rent Kissel Associates, the land planner. The subject property is the former National Italian-American Sports Hall of Fame building. It's an existing four-story former museum building located at 1429 to 1431 West Taylor Street. The site is approximately 9,585 square feet in area and includes over 90 feet of frontage on Taylor Street. The property currently provides two parking spaces at the rear of the building. The building has been vacant since 2019. The applicant proposes to renovate and reuse the existing building as a 35-room boutique hotel with commercial and retail space at the ground floor and basement levels. The hotel would be operated by the applicant as part of its The Neighborhood Hotel portfolio, which is the applicant's brand of boutique hotels. The applicant has a location in Lincoln Park at 2616 North Clark and a location in Grand Haven, Michigan as well. The property is currently located in the B3-5 Community Shopping District, which allows hotels, when approved, as a special use. The property is located within 1,320 feet of the Ashland Avenue Bus Line corridor, which is a designated bus line corridor under the Chicago zoning ordinance. The property is also located on a designated pedestrian or P Street and is within 2,460 feet of the CTA Pink Line Station. As a result of the proximity of these transit facilities, the property is considered a transit serve location under the Chicago zoning ordinance. In addition to the special use for the hotel, the applicant is also seeking approval of a variation as a transit serve location to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 13 to two. The parking reduction would, could be approved as an administrative adjustment, but because the ZBA is authorized to approve any matter that is eligible for an administrative adjustment as a variation, the zoning administrator has referred the parking matter to the ZBA so that it can be heard with the special use for the hotel. The existing building is a four-story former museum building. The project would increase the number of stories of the building without increasing the height by adding a story in between two existing stories. The project will include retail and commercial spaces at the ground floor and basement levels and 35 hotel rooms would be provided on floors two through five. The two existing spaces, one would be, would remain. One would be ADA compliant and those would continue to be provided. One loading berth is also provided. The overall project FAR will be 4.01, which is below the maximum permitted FAR of five. The project would add light welts to the interior sidewalls, update the facades, and add balconies to the recesses along the Taylor Street elevation. It would also modify the building, the building entrance to remove a recessed portion, which is more consistent with the pedestrian street standards. A total of 8,679 square feet of commercial and retail space would be provided between the ground floor and basement levels. 11 new bike parking spaces are proposed at the rear of the property. The project was vetted by the community under the leadership of Alderman Irvin and with the Little Italy Chicago Neighborhood Association, LCH. The applicant presented the project at a community-wide meeting on March 15 and conducted numerous developer-led, one-on-one, and group meetings with neighborhoods, neighbors, and community stakeholders. Community feedback has been supportive and Alderman Irvin provided a letter, which was provided as an exhibit earlier this week and last week. As set forth in the witness statements and land use evaluation report that were submitted to the board ahead of this meeting, the request for, for special use for the hotel and for the variation to reduce the parking requirement meet the criteria set forth in the, in the zoning ordinance for approval of the requested special use and variation. At this point, I would like to call my witnesses.
Great, thank you. And Counselor, I can, if it works with you, I'll just go down the list and swear everyone in. Great. Okay, so Jonathan Gordon, can you please state your name and address?
Jonathan Gordon, 100 East Bellby Place, Chicago.
Uh, Jonathan Gordon, one hundred East Bellevue Place, Chicago, six oh six, one one.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, uh, do we have Carla Uihara?
Um, Chairman, um, Chip Von Weisey, uh, the principal of the project architect is here to testify. Carla is his associate.
Great. Okay, Mr. Von Weisey, will you state your name and address?
Yes, Chip Von Weisey, Von Weisey Associates Architects, ten forty-nine North Ashland Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six, two two.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you. Um, and we have, uh, George Kissel as well. Is that correct?
That's correct. Chairman, I believe I'm already sworn.
Yeah, yeah, we've sworn you in. Um, so, so Counselor, we're good.
Thank you. Um, I know you have a full agenda, so I'm happy to conduct a shortened form of direct examination. If there are questions, we can go into that, um, as well.
Great, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Gordon, if you could please state your name and business address for the record.
Uh, Jonathan Gordon, one hundred East Bellevue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six, one one.
And you are the manager of the applicant, Neighborhood Little Italy, correct?
That's correct.
And the applicant is the owner of the property, correct?
Correct.
You are an active developer of hotels and related retail spaces branded as the Neighborhood Hotel, correct?
That's correct.
And DLA Piper, as counsel for the applicant, submitted proposed findings of fact and an affidavit signed by you in connection with this matter, correct?
That's correct.
And if called to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with those proposed findings of fact and affidavit, correct?
That's correct.
Um, I'll move on to Mr. Von Weisey, uh, at this point. Uh, Mr. Von Weisey, would you please state your name and business address for the record?
Uh, Chip Von Weisey, ten forty-nine North Ashland Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six, two two.
And you are the founder and principal of Von Weisey Associates, the project architect, correct?
Yes.
You are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, correct?
Yes.
And you were retained by the applicant to draft architectural plans for the renovation and reuse of the existing building located at fourteen twenty-nine to fourteen thirty-one West Taylor to a thirty-five-room hotel with commercial and retail spaces and the, and the ground floor, at the ground floor and basement levels, correct?
Correct.
DLA Piper, as counsel for the applicant, submitted proposed findings of fact and an affidavit signed by your associate Carla Uihara in connection with this matter, correct?
Correct.
And if called to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with those proposed findings of fact and that affidavit. Is that correct?
Correct.
At this point, I will proceed to Mr. Kissel. Mr. Kissel, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. My name is George Kissel, president of Oakrenckissel Associates, offices at one forty-one West Jackson.
And if you could please state your profession and company?
Sure, I'm a licensed architect and a certified planner with over forty years of experience in the field of zoning and urban planning.
And you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of the proposal of special use and variations to allow for the establishment of the hotel with up to thirty-five rooms and reduced off-street parking from thirteen spaces to two spaces for a transit serve location, uh, at the subject property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings and conclusions, which DLA, as counsel for the applicant, submitted to the board with its findings of fact and affidavits. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, and Mr. Kissel, if you were called to testify, continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with findings and conclusions contained in your report? Specifically, and specifically that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of special uses and variations for the proposed parking reduction.
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Um, so Chairman, I'm happy to go into a longer form of, of testimony or, um, have the witnesses respond if there are specific questions from the board. Um, but that does conclude the short form of testimony at this point, um, and we would respectfully request the board's approval of the special use. Um, as I previously indicated, we did submit a letter of support from Alderman Urban, um, that we submitted that through staff, um, so that should be in the packets, um, but we are otherwise available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that process, Counselor. Um, any questions from the board? You know, Counselor, I have one and, you know, I, it touched, it's touched on in your report, but I was just wondering if either the applicant or architect could go, um, a little bit into depth on the logistics of, of drop-off pickup, um, related to there, there not being very much parking, uh, nor, nor any type of driveway.
Sure. So, um, in terms of the, you know, what, the idea of adding parking to the site, um, I'm happy to have the architect talk about that. It would require substantial demolition of the building, um, it would be bringing cars in off of the alley, so there's that aspect of it. Um, and then I'm, I'm happy to have, uh, Mr. Gordon speak to kind of operationally from the hotel standpoint. Um, if, that seems to be the question you're asking, is what, what do they look like? Um, so, Mr. Gordon, if you could please describe, um, your, your operational, um, aspects with respect to guests, how you interact with guests during the reservation process to identify whether they'll need parking, if they'll need parking and what you do. And, and I know you've had some conversations and are aware of parking facilities in the neighborhood um, that you'd be able to leverage. If you could kind of speak to those aspects.
So we do, um, ask the guests at booking if they'll need parking and we go help facilitate that early on in the process. And in our Lincoln Park Hotel, similar to here, you know, we're in a walkable neighborhood and less than twenty percent of the guests um, use the parking. Um, we've talked to, um, you know, the the valets and a handful of parking lot owners, um, to make arrangements for our guests to park within a, a short walk of the hotel.
And, Mr. Gordon, if you could, um, further elaborate on your experience in the industry um, and, you know, specifically that the nature of the hotel being a neighborhood-based hotel, um, the expectation around the number of trips, um, it, it is such a walkable neighborhood. I think that's part of your, um, part of the, the story here to tell as well.
Right, uh, you know, our, our guests are looking for this immersive neighborhood experience where they can come via public transportation and rely on the community and the, the local businesses up and down Taylor Street for their food, beverage and entertainment while in Chicago.
Great. And, and just to jump in, so, um, if, if I'm a, a guest and I'm getting dropped off on Taylor Street, um, and I've got my bags in the trunk and it just takes a second, or is the Uber or whatever car that brought me to the hotel, is it just wait, i- it's in the street, right? There's no other real access point?
The access point is in front of the hotel.
Yep.
Which is across from the, uh, uh, you know, the plaza, um, on the fourteen hundred block.
Okay.
Mr. Gordon, there, there is a, an existing loading zone um, in front of the hotel, is there, correct?
Correct.
Your expectation is that you would, you would continue to use that as a loading zone, is that correct?
Okay, thank you. Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, we've got a lot of information on this, so I think we have everything, um, that we need.
Perfect. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, and we'll take this under consideration. Appreciate everybody's time and enjoy the weekend.
You too. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you. All right, let's call, um, now a fifteen-minute recess that will bring us to eleven ten AM Central. Um, so Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Sol?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um, we'll see everyone at, um, eleven ten AM. Thank you.
All right, everyone, just waiting on a commissioner. There we go. Okay, welcome back. I moved that we re convene this April 22nd, 2022. Virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Wonderful. I vote yes. We are back. And we are moving right into calendar number 113-22-S. If anyone is here to object on calendar number 113-22-S, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted. As the counselor gets situated, I'm going to read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon.
Thank you.
With that, for Barnes, great.
Thanks. Hi.
Hi. And we'll just start with saying, you know, we're just asking for streamlined versions where there's objectors. So with that, take it away.
Yeah, I just want to confirm that my two witnesses made it on and we should have Amanda Diedrick. She's the applicant. And then our MAI certified appraiser, Joseph Ryan.
Great.
Amanda Diedrick is here.
Perfect.
I'm here, Sarah, sorry.
No, you guys are good. So, Mr. Chairman, if it pleases you, you could go ahead and get Ms. Diedrick and Mr. Ryan sworn in. And then I'll get through my quick little synopsis.
Perfect. Okay, so Ms. Diedrick, will you please state your name and address?
Amanda Diedrick, 2301 North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois, 60614.
Thank you. And do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Joe Ryan, we have you sworn in and we have acknowledged your expertise previously in today's hearing.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you again. Oh, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and good morning once more, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the record. My name is Sarah Barnes and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm happy to be here this morning on behalf of Ms. Diedrick, who operates and does business under Blowout Incorporated. As well as you've seen, we have our MAI certified expert appraiser, Joe Ryan with us. We are here today seeking a special use, which if granted, will allow for Ms. Diedrick to operate a single stylist hair salon within the rear of the existing building at the subject site. It is a, an existing storefront, which was previously occupied by a real estate office, as you can see in this photograph. Ms. Diedrick is under a long-term lease with the property owner whose support has been given to seek the special use. With no further ado, the reason obviously that we require the special use is there are a couple of other personal services in the neighborhood because this particular stretch of Halsted Street and Armitage tend to be local businesses that cater to the residents of the neighborhood, which is exactly what Ms. Diedrick intends to do. So with that, since we have no objectors and a recommendation from DPD, I will just get Ms. Diedrick on the record really quickly, please. Ms. Diedrick, if you can once more just state your name for the record.
Amanda Diedrick.
Thank you. And Ms. Diedrick, you are a licensed cosmetologist in the state of Illinois. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have just over 10 years of experience in the hairstyling industry. Is that right?
Yes.
And in particular, you have special credentials and experience with hair extensions. Is that also correct?
That's correct.
And that's the bulk of your business. Is that right?
Yes.
And because that type of hair styling does take a significant amount of time, you wanted to create an atmosphere that was kind of peaceful and quiet since you are with your clients for sometimes four or five hours at a time. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and as I mentioned, you are, you've executed a lease with the property owner. Is that right?
Correct.
And if the special use is granted, you intend to be the sole stylist, at least to begin at this property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you'll continue to treat or to use your existing clientele. Is that also true?
True.
Thank you. The hours of operation, Mr. Chairman, are set forth in the findings of fact. If you have specific questions regarding her operations, we'd be happy to take them, but I don't want to keep the board. I know you have a long day. So just one last time, Ms. Diedrick, prior to this hearing, you were provided with a copy of the findings of fact as well as your affidavit. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Yes.
Thanks so much. Mr. Ryan, if you may, once again, state your name for the record.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, the offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan, you were retained by the applicant in order to evaluate the subject property as well as the surrounding area in order to make a determination as to whether the proposed hair salon used at this property meets all of the standards and criteria for a special use as set forth in the current zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
And did you have an opportunity to undertake those evaluations and formulate opinions regarding the same?
I did examine all of the criteria needed for this board to grant a special use for hair salon and the property met all of the criteria for the proposed use.
Wonderful. And were those opinions and that determination set forth in a report that was prepared by you?
Yes.
And that report, Mr. Chairman, has been tendered to the board prior to this hearing and should be a part again of the applicant's findings of fact. So with that, I will rest and turn it over to the board. Should you have any questions?
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions from the board? Okay, I think we have plenty of information here. I thank everyone for your time and enjoy the weekend. Take it under consideration.
You too. Thanks so much.
Good luck. Okay, we're going to move straight to calendar number 114-22-Z. And I believe we stay with Counselor Barnes.
You do. Last time for today, though.
Great. Okay, go right ahead. I'm just looking to see that we have.
So we should have with us Gerard Coyle as well as Christopher Baum, who I believe may have already testified today.
Yeah, we've got, we've got Christopher.
Okay, that should be, or it might be under Alan Coyle.
Yeah, I'm here, guys. Thanks.
Oh, got it. I believe Mr. Baum's been sworn in, but Mr. Chairman, if you would like to swear in Mr. Coyle, I can.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Coyle, will you please state your name and address?
Gerard Coyle, 1456 West Fullerton.
Thank you. Thank you. Do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding. Can, can you, yeah, okay, good. I think Mr. Baum just muted. So one more time, Mr. Coyle, can you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Baum has been sworn in previously today.
Thank you. Wonderful. Good morning, one last time for today, Mr. Chairman and esteemed members of the board. Once again, my name is Sarah Barnes and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Sam Banks. Very happy to be here this morning on behalf of the applicant, 3350 North Ashland LLC. As already indicated, here with me today is the managing member of the applicant LLC Gerard Coyle as well as our project architect, Christopher Baum. We are here today seeking a single variation to reduce the required rear setback for a residential building in a B-zoned classification by six and a half feet, which is just about 20% of the required rear setback for residential uses in this zoning classification. This relief is necessary in order to complete the underlying Type 1 zoning map amendment process, which will allow for the construction of a new four-story, eight-unit, all-residential building at the subject property. This is a process that we actually started with alderman Matthew Martin and the community just about a year ago. And just for clarification with the board, so it doesn't get confusing as we continue through this. The denial and overall description for the new building calls for a five-story building. The reason for that is because there is a basement. The basement is more than 50% above grade. So the Department of Planning and Development treated that as the first floor. But for all practical purposes and with regard to the corresponding plan package, it's a four-story building and the basement is treated as a basement. So you'll probably hear me referring to a four-story building. Towards these same ends, based on our ongoing engagement with the aldermen and the community members, including the Roscoe Village, Lakeview Chamber of Commerce and Neighborhood Association, as well as the 47th Ward Zoning Advisory Committee, I am happy to say that we appear before you here today for this variation with the ongoing support of all of those interested parties who also are supportive of the variation. As a super quick matter of relevant background, as you may have gleaned from this introduction, the applicant effectuated a Type 1 zoning map amendment for this property, which was ratified by city council and approved by the committees for zoning back in and around November of 2021, pursuant to the exact same plans that provide the basis for this variation. The reason that's important, Mr. Chairman, is because we do have a substandard lot condition, which provides the practical and topographical hardship over which we had to overcome to develop some programming for this site. But as well, due to some very specific expressed demands made by the community and the aldermen in consideration of that Type 1 zoning map amendment, when you couple the two together, you come up with the building here. And the only reason we require the rear setback relief is because of the constraints within which we were working with the community on developing this site. So with no further ado, I'm going to put on Mr. Coyle and get to the bones of this. Mr. Coyle, may you once more state your name for the record?
Gerard died a coil.
Mr. Coyle, you're the owner of the subject property. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the subject property consists of a single zoning lot, which measures just about 50 feet in width, but it's only 108 feet deep. Is that correct?
Correct. Sorry, the first, come back to the first question. I'm, I'm not the owner right now. This is kind, we're buying a contingent on getting this. So the owner has signed this, the paperwork to allow me represent him today.
Right, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, you're right. I'm so sorry. Mr. Chairman, there is the letter of consent from the property owner and an EBS in the file for the property owner. Thank you, Mr. Coyle. No, thank you. Towards these ends, so the subject site is approximately 17 feet shorter than a standard city lot. Is that correct?
Correct, 100%.
And so once more, that kind of created one of the practical and topographical hardships over which you had to overcome to develop programming, functional programming for this site. Is that right?
Yes.
And you worked very closely with your design team as well as with Alderman Martin and the respective members of the community, which included some of the neighbors towards the redevelopment of this site. Is that right?
Correct.
And during our community review for the proposal, we were directed as consideration again for the zoning map amendment to do a couple of things with the programming for the building. One of those was to cap the height of the building at four stories, so not to do a fifth story, even though you would be otherwise permitted to do so under the current zoning classification. Is that right?
Correct.
So since you couldn't go vertical, you did have to go a little bit longer with your building. Is that correct?
Yes.
On this substandard lot?
Correct.
Thank you. And then as well, other considerations were to provide larger, family-oriented units and/or units that could be used by individuals who have now adapted more of a work-from-home lifestyle. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in doing so, they also wanted you to, to keep the density of the building on the lower end, even though, once again, you could actually build double the amount of units that you're proposing. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. And in doing that, they also wanted us to provide off-street parking for each of the units because there seems to be a parking, a street parking deficiency in that part of the neighborhood. Is that right?
Yes.
So all of those considerations and the substandard lots depth is what brings us before this board here today. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Coyle, you again are under contract to purchase this property. You have budgeted $3.5 million in construction costs alone. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And that's in addition to the $1.5 million to acquire the property. Is that right?
Correct.
So in the end, if this project gets approved and you go in for permitting, you'll be investing a little over $6 million towards this project. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in the very best case scenario, based on current market conditions, which are changing every day, you stand to, if all of the, all of the units get sold and occupied, you stay at the prices that you. you stay at the prices that you intend to market them. Um, you stand to receive about an eight percent return on your investment. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's a pretty modest return on such a significant investment. Is that true?
Correct.
Thank you. And in looking at some alternatives for this proposal that would not require the rear setback relief, um, any such proposal would actually probably leave, leave you with no return on your investment or a very negligible one at about zero point eight percent. Is that right?
Correct.
And to any such alternative proposal, due to the significantly short lot depth, would probably bring us still before this board, either for a parking variation or for a variation to accommodate for that parking. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Lastly, Mr. Coyle, as I mentioned, we were pretty proactively involved with the community throughout this process. And Alderman Martin, you, you personally participated in those meetings and that engagement. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention, we did tender a copy of the letter of support from Alderman Martin, as well as from the local community organization, and that should be a part of our findings of fact. Um, Mr. Coyle, finally, prior to this hearing, you were provided with a copy of the findings of fact, as well as an affidavit attesting to certain facts provided therein. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in those documents?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm parched. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Coyle. I'd be happy to go on to Mr. Baum or to entertain any questions the board may have.
Yeah, let's go to, let's go to Mr. Baum, and then we'll circle back to the board.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Mr. Baum. You were retained by the applicant in order to come up with the programming for the proposed new four-story, eight-unit residential building. Is that right? And you and your office also participated actively in the ongoing community engagement for this project. Is that true?
Yes.
And as already mentioned, one of the primary and predominant hardships over which you, that you had to overcome in developing the programming for the new building, is that really significant substandard locked up? Is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Um, and even still, above and beyond that, you also had certain demands that were made by the community that affected the programming for the new building. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
So when you kind of take all those together, it creates a perfect storm. Is that true?
Yes.
Um, but even still, you were able to take this substandard lot and do develop programming for this new building that not only satisfied the community demands, but also satisfies and complies with every other strict standard of the zoning ordinance, but for that small setback reduction at the rear. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Baum. So in doing so, is it your expert opinion, as a licensed architect, that the proposed variation for the rear setback and the proposed programming for the site meets all of the standards and requirements for a variation as set forth under the current zoning ordinance?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Um, and Mr. Baum, real quickly, if this was a standard depth lot, or even if this lot was seven feet, as opposed to seventeen feet longer, is it true that you would not require the proposed rear setback relief?
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you. And for Mr. Toya, all of the properties on this side of Ashland Avenue do share this same substandard lot condition, lot depth. Um, and almost all of them have encumbrances and encroachments in their rear setback, a couple of which have come before this board seeking the similar relief. Coincidentally, if you flip over to the other side of this same block of Ashland Avenue, all of those sites are actually a hundred and twenty-five feet in depth. So if we were situated across the street, we would not require the proposed relief. Um, so with that, Mr. Baum, as well, prior to this hearing, you were provided with a copy of the findings of fact, as well as an affidavit attesting to some of the facts that were provided therein. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in those documents?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, I will rest. We just very respectfully request the approval of this board for the variation and are here to answer any questions.
Great. I'll divert to the board. Any questions from the board?
No, I just want to say, Counselor, thank you very much. You dotted your i's and crossed your t's from meeting with business groups, the neighborhood groups, to the Alderman, and then also explaining the lot size. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
I try and learn something new every hearing.
You do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I like you got our former, our former board members a little sign behind you. I like that. So.
Oh, I do.
I know. I like that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, questions from the board? Great. I just had a question, wondering if either Counselor or the architect could discuss a little bit about the buildings in the surrounding area, like the average height, just to make sure we know that a taller building would be out of the, out of the ordinary in the neighborhood. I'd just like to get a little bit more of a mental image.
Sure. There's, I think there's pictures. I don't know if Ms. Vasquez has them on part of the PowerPoint. Um, so the tallest buildings on this block, even the newer construction ones, Mr. Chairman, are four stories. There was a more robust package of photographs in the findings of fact, so you might have those in your file, since they're not available. Um, so that's why the community group, actually, and Alderman kind of has a policy for this part of Ashland Avenue to cap everything at four stories, because there just aren't any bigger buildings.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful weekend. Enjoy the heatwave.
You too.
Thanks. Bye.
Bye. Okay, we will now move to calendar number one fifteen dash twenty-two dash Z. Um, this will be Counselor Tim Barton. If anyone is here to object for calendar number one fifteen dash twenty-two dash Z, please just raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. Counselor Barton, when you're here, you can, you can get started.
Thank you. Let me just ask, is Warren Berger, can you tell if Warren Berger is on the call?
Yep, Warren is on. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. For the record, my name is Tim Barton with the law firm of Attorney Thomas Raines, Attorney at Law LLC. I'm representing the applicant here today, South Chicago Blues Club, Inc., also known as Lee's Unleaded Blues. Um, Mr. Burger, Warren Berger is the sole member of the corporation and is here today. Um, Mr. Berger bought the subject property at seventy-four oh one South Chicago um, in two thousand and eighteen with the intention of re-establishing um, a well-known Blues Club here, which was Lee's Unleaded Blues Club. Um, and he wanted to establish it at its original location. Um, the club is still remembered as one of Chicago's most iconic Blues Clubs. Um, it drew audiences from the neighborhood, from the entire city, and even had international visitors. Um, it was established in nineteen eighty-three by Ray and Leola Lee Gray, um, and operated by them until two thousand and two, and by subsequent owners through two thousand and fifteen. Um, as you can see, the property is improved with a two-story building constructed about a hundred years ago. It's relatively small building on the corner of South Chicago and Seventy-Fourth Street. Um, its ground floor area, or its ground floor, floor area is approximately twelve hundred and ninety square feet. Um, in two thousand and eight, a variation for a PPA for the club was applied for by the previous operator and approved by the zoning board. This proposed PPA will be operated in conjunction with a tavern, which is a permitted use in its C-one dash two zoning district. There is an RS-three residential district north of the site, immediately across the street. Uh, the applicant is requesting a variation to locate the PPA or the public place of amusement within a hundred and twenty-five feet of the residential district. Closest house is actually a hundred and forty, forty feet away. Um, as I said, Mr. Berger is here to testify, and I would ask that you swear him in, Mr. Chairman.
Of course. Okay, Mr. Berger, can you state your name and address, please?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is the court partner. I'm so sorry. There's someone at my front door. Can I just take one second?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take a, we'll take a pause, and then we'll get Mr. Berger off, off mute. So go right ahead. Everyone, moment of meditation.
Sorry, thank you.
Great. Okay, perfect. Okay, Mr. Berger, if you unmute, can you please state your name and address?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, we can.
I am Warren Berger, fifteen fifty-five North Dearborn Parkway, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one oh.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Uh, Mr. Berger, uh, can you remind us when you bought this property?
Um, I'm not sure of the exact date, to be honest with you, but it's been a couple of years.
Okay. Um, and can you tell us why you were interested in this particular property? What drew, what drew you to it?
Well, for one thing, I operate another tavern in the general location, and I have for many years and been involved in the community around Seventy-Fifth and Stony Island. And the, I spoke with Alderman Leslie Harrison at the time, and she suggested to me that the facility was available and it would really be good for the whole area if I would consider purchasing it and operating it as a Blues Club with live music as it had been. So I did it.
Okay, thanks. Um, and can you tell the board what the immediate area physically is like?
Well, the, the, the South Chicago itself is mostly kind of an industrial area. There, there's no residential at all in South Chicago. And, um, behind the bar on University, of course, there are residences, like, maybe, I don't know the exact measurements, but maybe a block away, it's residential.
Okay. Um, let's see, what's the lot, and you have a lot immediately to the east, correct, on Seventy-Fourth Street?
Yes.
Is that lot vacant?
It, it's basically vacant, yes.
Okay. Um, and to the south on South Chicago, same question.
Well, across the street is a, a trucking company. And then it, it going a little bit to the west, they have kind of remediated a lot and, uh, which might have been polluted or whatever, and it, again, is vacant and fenced.
Okay. And on the north side, let me ask you, on the northeast corner of Seventy-Fourth Street and University, um, what is that lot?
Well, there's a vacant lot right there, too.
Okay.
Uh, there's a residence across the street, but the one, there's an actual vacant lot, um, right across the street.
Okay, thank you. So is it your understanding that there is a residential zoning district? In fact, what's called an RS-three district that begins on the north side of Seventy-Fourth Street and continues north of University Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know, I have an approximate idea of how close the nearest residences?
I, I, I don't. Maybe a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. Um, let me ask, um, did you meet with Alderman Harrison regarding this project? You said you did, but any further?
I did, and we also had a meeting with the block club uh, residences which are closest to the facility.
Okay.
Along with the Alderman's Chief of Staff.
Thank you. Is it true that the club received one of the twenty-seven grants from the City of Chicago's Neighborhood Opportunity Fund?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and I assume that was supported by Alderman Harrison?
Yes.
Okay. Um, for the board's information, what will the hours of operation be?
Uh, thi- this would be a standard tavern license, which is two AM, and then on Saturday, three AM.
Okay. And, um, let me just ask, are you undertaking any special arrangements to minimize the impact of the club um, on the, on the residential neighborhood?
Uh, yes, two, two things. Uh, one, we intend to have security, uh, patrolling on the outside, uh, so as to just the well-being of our guests, and also to minimize any adverse effects of, of patrons going into the neighborhood. And secondly, uh, which I already do on Seventy-Fifth Street, um, I have someone every day clean up the area.
Okay. Um, Mr. Berger, our office submitted findings of fact and your signed affidavit that's part of this application. If you were to testify further today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions. Thank you. I want to, so someone is there hand raised. I just want to confirm that, um, uh, what they're here for, whether or not they're objecting. Okay. So Sam, I, I woo yo, I just promoted you. Um, and when you get in, if you could unmute and let us know if you're here on this matter and in what capacity?
I'm sorry to interfere. I'm not on this matter. My name is Patience and I will, and I'm, I'm, I'm opposed for the matter of seven five two two dash S. So I don't know if I was BSK, because I've been here since nine, and I don't know.
Yeah. So we will be hearing that. It's just going to be at the end of the day. Um, pretty near the end of the day, but, but it's on our agenda. It hasn't been continued, so we will be here.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep, yep, thank you. Um, okay, so back to one fifteen dash twenty-two dash Z. Um, I'll start with a question. So, uh, Mr. Berger, can you just go a little bit more in-depth on, are you going to be charging cover every night frequently? What does the operations look like in that sense?
Well, on, on nights when we have, uh, shall we say, name-brand musicians, we will have to charge a cover to cover the expense of those musicians. Uh, there will definitely be nights where we'll have, like, open jam, and, uh, we will not be charging, because it will be more, uh, involved with the community and allowing up-and-coming musicians to actually come in and display their talents.
Great. Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions from the board? Great. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I I would like to note, you know, what we're trying to do here is actually to revive on the south side, something which was a part of the history of Chicago being the blues, live blues specifically in a way that it used to be and it does not exist anymore on the south side and we want to revive that.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I know the the application that we reviewed included a I think it was a Sun Time story. It was one of the publications.
Yes.
It sounds like a really cool project. So any other questions from the board or else we'll take this under consideration? Okay, we've got what we need, everyone. Enjoy your time and thank you for coming or enjoy the weekend and thank you for coming today.
Thanks a lot.
Yep. All right, next up, we're going to go to calendar numbers one twenty dash twenty-two dash Z and one twenty-one dash twenty-two dash Z. This will be Counselor Kate Duncan. So Kate, once you're all situated, we'll get going and I'll just say, if anyone is here to object to either of these matters, raise your hand and we'll get you promoted.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kate Duncan. I'm an attorney with offices located at seventy-one South Wacker Drive in Chicago. I'm appearing this morning on behalf of the applicant Noble Network of Charter Schools in connection with the proposed application for variations for the property located at sixty-three fifty South Stewart Avenue, which is located in an RT four zoning district. Present this morning with me are Hillary Knutson, who's the Director of Facilities and Construction for Noble Network Charter Schools, along with Architect Katie Lambert from OKW Architecture. Mr. Chairman, perhaps we could swear them in at this moment?
Yeah, let's do it. And really quick, we've got, I see Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor on and so I promoted someone named Mario Kota. And I just want to make sure that we know Mario's role here. Mario, so are you here to object?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick question. I believe the next case was the one one six two two Z and one one seven two two Z. Have those been rescheduled or?
Yeah, so Mario, we at the beginning of our hearings, we do continuances and withdrawals. So all of those were continued for other reasons to our next meeting. So we're on one twenty now.
Oh, okay.
So you were here for one sixteen?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Questions, sir. I just wanted to ask you, can you give me the date when that was? I believe it's in May, is that correct?
Yes, this one went to sorry, let me, this string was continued to to June and I'm just going to double confirm that to make sure my memory is right.
Okay.
Yep, okay, so that string of matters, yes, was continued to June seventeen, twenty twenty-two, so it'll be our two meetings from now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thanks for coming. We'll see you then. Okay. Okay, Kate, sorry. I train of thought.
If we could share in the witnesses, please.
Perfect. All right, so we will first Hillary Knutson, which I will note for everyone on the call, I'm not related to. There's a different spelling, so no refusal needed. Will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Hillary Knutson. Address is one North State Street, floors fifteen, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh two.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll also swear in Katie Lambert. Katie, if you're on, can you state your name and address, please?
Hi, Katie Lambert. My office is at six hundred West Jackson, suite two fifty, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six six one.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also, you noted that someone from the Alderman's office is on, and so I just want to make sure that we've addressed that as well.
Yeah, that's right. Do we have Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor or someone from her office on?
I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And so would you like to speak at the beginning of the matter or the end? Beginning? Okay, great. So you could just introduce yourself for everyone on the call. I'll swear you in. You can go right ahead.
Okay, I am Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor of the twentieth ward and the proposed project is in the twentieth ward in Inglewood. This is actually a ten-year-old school and this location used to be an elementary school. And so knowing that Noble Charter, I mean, I'm sorry, Johnson College Prep, I have visited. I've enjoyed the students and the staff there. This is a much-needed upgrade to the facade, thinking about that it is now housing high school students in our community. And so changing the front facade gives it a very different look. It would bring in light and thinking about that it's across the street from a senior home who ultimately has communication with the school. And so this is something much needed in the ward because we want to bring change to the community and this definitely is add-on as far as I'm concerned. And so I am in support of this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And thanks so much for sticking on the call, Alderwoman, to to give your support. We really appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Alderwoman. I appreciate it. Okay, so I'll I'll begin then. So the applicant Noble Network of Charter Schools is seeking to perform some minor renovations to the exterior of the existing school known as Johnson College Prep. The purpose of the improvements is to modernize and update the school, giving more light and air to the interior spaces while making the exterior more lively and inviting. In order to accomplish this project, applicant is here seeking the following relief. Number one, a variation to reduce the the minimum required front setback from fifteen feet to just over zero feet, zero point three three feet in order to construct a new planter with the attached benches and a new louvered roofs supported by a column over the entry plaza. The existing school is already encroaching into the required front setback and it's only setback twelve point one feet from the property boundary rather than the required fifteen feet. In addition, there are also existing stairs and a roof overhang that are setback approximately eleven feet from the property boundary and an existing ramp that's only about almost four feet from the property boundary. And as you can see from the renderings here, while the proposed improvements encroach to a greater extent by the letter of the law, the look of the school actually is more open and the improvements actually make the building appear to encroach less into the front yard. In addition to the front yard setback variation, we also would, we also need a variation to the Chicago zoning landscape ordinance to waive interior landscape in the existing parking lot and to waive the seven-foot required landscape setback along West Sixty-Fourth Street and South Eggleston Avenue and also to allow the existing metal fence to remain at the property line instead of pulled in five feet from the property line. In proposing these these minor updates to the exterior of the school, the requirement for full compliance with the Chicago zoning landscape ordinance has been triggered. The zoning code states that if the value of the improvements exceeds a hundred and fifty percent of the assessed value of the building, then full compliance with the landscape ordinance is required. In this instance, the assessed value of the building is actually zero since the property is real estate tax exempt because of applicant status as a not-for-profit school. Therefore, any improvement whatsoever to the building, no matter how small, will end up triggering full compliance with the landscape ordinance under the zoning code. So as a result, as a not-for-profit school, the cost for full compliance with the landscape ordinance will end up precluding the applicant's ability to construct most of the contemplated improvements to the school since that full cost for compliance with the landscape ordinance is extensive and will encompass a very significant portion of the amount that was budgeted for these improvements. The parking lot area is actually in very good condition and applicant had recently completed some minor renovations to the existing parking lot, including installation of a decorative metal fence and repaving and striping of the parking lot. Full compliance with the landscape ordinance would also result in significant hardship on applicants in that applicants would lose a significant amount of parking spaces. And as a result, this would make the parking for the school non-compliant with the parking requirements set forth in the zoning code. So today, there are twenty-five parking spaces in the parking lot and twenty-three parking spaces are required. If the the letter of the law, the landscape ordinance was met, we would lose ten parking spaces, putting us down to only fifteen parking spaces, which present a hardship not only for compliance with the parking requirements, but also for the school itself in needing those parking spaces for their staff and employees. So accordingly, we are here today requesting variations so that the school can make these minor but significant and important improvements to the exterior of the building. So along with the findings of fact that we have submitted, we included affidavits of Ms. Hillary Knutson and Mrs. Katie Lambert. The school has met with all of the neighbors adjacent to the property and multiple community organizations, including the Residents Association of Greater Inglewood, the Inglewood CAC, the Tolton Manor Manor Senior Living Facility, St. Bernard Hospital, Teamwork Inglewood, and obviously Alderwoman Taylor. And so, in fact, I think we have submitted letters of support from St. Bernard Hospital. We had sort of a late arrival of a letter of support from the senior living facility across the street, which we've transmitted all of that to the board. And then obviously Alder Alderwoman Taylor is here today voicing her support for the project as well. And so with that, I would like to go over to Ms. Knutson. If Ms. Knutson, if you could, please state your name and you're and you've already given us your address. So please just state your name again.
Hillary Knutson.
So Ms. Knutson, can you tell the board a little bit about Noble Network of Charter Schools and who you are?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you for the time today, everyone. Noble Schools is a network of high-performing college preparatory public charter schools serving some of Chicago's most under-resourced communities. We are founded in nineteen ninety-nine. Noble has eighteen campuses, serving twelve thousand five hundred students. We are committed to anti-racism and strive for equity in experiences and outcomes, eliminating the predictability of success or failure based on race, gender, ability, class, sexual orientation, or any other identity markers. At Noble, we will ensure that all students have equitable and positive school experiences that equip them to complete college and live choice-filled lives.
Thank you. And can you tell the board a little bit about Johnson College Prep specifically?
Absolutely. Johnson College Prep has been a pillar in the Inglewood community since two thousand and ten with over twelve hundred graduates. Johnson's mission is to prepare all scholars for post-secondary success while developing their social awareness to serve the communities of Chicago. Our students are tenacious, dedicated, creative, and very successful. As of April fourth, ninety-nine percent of the graduating class of two thousand and twenty-two has received a college acceptance letter, which is incredible. Johnson College Prep is also the inaugural recipient of the Hope Scholarship, which provides all of our students and their parents with free college tuition. We want to make the exterior of Johnson College Prep reflect the beauty and the magic that's happening inside our classrooms each and every day. Our scholars, our staff, our families, and the surrounding Inglewood community really deserve it.
Thank you, Ms. Knutson. Have you submitted an affidavit along with your findings of fact to this board?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the testimony in your affidavit?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to just move on and put our architect on the record quickly unless you'd like to ask Ms. Knutson any questions about the the applications that we're here to discuss today?
Yeah, let's get the architect on and then we'll circle back for questions.
Okay. Ms. Lambert, can you please state your name for the record?
Katie Lambert.
And are you a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
I am.
Okay, and Ms. Lambert, have you submitted an affidavit along with your findings of fact to this board?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the testimony in your affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to go into further presentation if you would so desire. Otherwise, I think we're just happy to answer any questions that you or the board may have.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, so let's go to questions. Are there any questions from the board? Counselor, I think we're I think we're good here.
Thank you so much.
So appreciate everyone's time. Congrats on all the success with this school. It sounds really fabulous. It's great to hear. And we will take this under consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. Let's let's move on to a double special use. We're going to go to calendar numbers one twenty-two dash twenty-two dash S and one twenty-three dash twenty-two dash S. I'll read the department's recommendation. Meantime, if anyone is here to object on this matter, again, one twenty-two dash twenty-two dash S and one twenty-three dash twenty-two dash S, raise your hand. We'll get you promoted. I'm promoting someone right now. I'm going to confirm that they're on for this this matter that we just asked for. So let's see. Laura Martin.
Yeah, I'm not about that matter. I just wanted to make sure my matter wasn't missed because it seems like you're going to be in numerical order and mine's like ninety-two. Could you just confirm that?
Yeah, so ninety-two is actually continuance, so that's at the end, so that it's numerical until we get to the continuances.
Got it.
It has not been called and it's last on our agenda for.
Okay, thank you so much. I will. I don't need to be a panelist, then I'll just.
Don't worry, it might be some, it might be some time.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, thank you. All right, again, if anyone's objecting to this, one twenty-two and one twenty-three, raise your hand. We'll get you promoted. I'm going to read the department's recommendation. For one twenty-two, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair nail salon. One twenty-three, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment on the ground floor of an existing three-story mixed-use building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant Southport Salon Concepts LLC, DBA, Endura Salon and Spa. And the establishment contains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which shall not be painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way, so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street. Okay, so Counselor Fatikas, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you, Chairman. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Stan Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Southport Salon Concepts LLC, which does business as the Endura Salon and Spa. The applicant currently leases a two-story retail building at thirty-three thirty-seven North Southport. And actually, in two thousand and sixteen, the applicant obtained special uses for the establishment of its personal service salon, which includes massage services. And again, those resolutions, copies of those resolutions, eighty-eight sixteen S and eighty-nine sixteen S were included with our findings of fact submittal. During the onset of the pandemic, though, the applicant did not properly renew its licenses. And due to the time lapse, new special uses are required in order to establish the full-service salon. In order to do so, again, we're seeking two special uses. The first is required because the subject property is located within a thousand feet of another personal service use and the second is specific to reestablish the massage services that are provided at the salon. I have two witnesses testifying in this matter today, the on behalf of the applicant, its manager, Mr. Michael Nass, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Sylvester Kerwin. And, Mr. Chairman, if you want to swear in Mr. Nass and Mr. Kerwin, I can get into questioning.
Great. Mr. Nass, will you state your name and address, please?
Michael Nass, twenty-five one fifty-seven North Illinois Route fifty-nine, Tower Lakes, Illinois, six zero zero one zero.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you. And Nick, I can get Bud on as well. So Bud, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Sylvester Bud Kerwin. I am president and owner of SJ Kerwin and Associates, Real Estate Appraisers and Consultants. My offices are at seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, and we recognize your expertise based off of many past appearances.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael, again, you're the man, you're the applicant, Southport Salon Concepts LLC, which does business as Endura Salon and Spa?
Yes.
And as I stated in my introduction, you've operated a full-service beauty salon with massage services at the subject property since about two thousand and sixteen. Is that right?
Yes.
Unfortunately, though, you learned after the fact that your staff had not properly renewed your business licenses for the continued operation of the salon. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And you actually found that out on your own when you attempted to renew the licenses in. And you actually found that out on your own when you attempted to renew the licenses in late 2021?
Yes, that is correct.
But to be clear, in this case, you actually did not receive a notice to correct or even a citation by the Department of Licensing for the outdated licenses, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
You proactively approached the licensing department when you confirmed that the licenses were out of date?
Yes, I did immediately.
And at that point, again, you obtained the necessary denial letters retained in my office, as well as Mr. Kerwin's services, and filed the application to bring the establishment back into compliance. Is that right?
Yes, I did.
And providing the zoning board approves the special uses to reestablish the salon and massage service component, the range of services will remain the same. Is that true?
Yes.
So again, it's a pretty wide range, but it's hair cutting, washing, styling, facials and skin treatments, waxing and hair removal, manicures, pedicures, and of course, the massage component, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And all the staff, which actually ranges between twenty and twenty-five team members, will continue to be individually licensed in their particular trade. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
And you're not proposing any changes to the business hours, those being again Tuesday through Friday, nine to nine, Saturdays and Sundays between nine and six, and then closed on Mondays, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And Michael, is it your understanding that my office provided the board with witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Great, thank you very much. Bud, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Again, you are an MAI-designated appraiser?
Yes, I'm also a certified general real estate appraiser in the state of Illinois.
And you are familiar with the subject property at three-three-three-seven North Southport, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And in fact, you were the MAI professional that testified in the original establishment of these uses back in 2016, correct?
Yes, that's also correct.
And the scope of your assignment in this case is to evaluate whether the requested special uses would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, right?
Yes.
And you also affected the subject area?
Yes, I did, early January and most recently on April fourteenth of this year.
And based on those, you prepared a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions. Is that right?
That is correct.
And it's your understanding that a report has already been submitted with the board?
Yes.
And generally speaking, you believe that the special use approval criteria are being met in both applications. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. It meets all of the criteria for the zoning standards.
Okay, Bud, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, it would be.
Great, thank you so much. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about the proposal.
Great, okay, yeah, so just to confirm something from the beginning. So did the last, did the pass permit lapse because of new management?
No, it's Mr. Nass and the Endura Salon have operated consistently since 2016. I believe what happened in this case, and we're trying to unpack what happened, license renewals were sent. There was actually turnover, unfortunately, during the pandemic, and the renewals were never processed. When Mr. Nass figured that out, he went to City Hall to attempt to reactivate the licenses, but unfortunately, the time period had elapsed. So we have reestablished the uses in order to continue the business.
Okay, so it was just simply not renewed? Okay.
Correct.
Great. Questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration, and thank you very much, everyone, for your time today.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. All right, we're going to move now. It's calendar number one twenty-four dash twenty-two dash A. This is an appeal, and this current board hasn't seen too many of these. So I'm just going to go over how we're going to run it. The appellant will put on their case, and then the zoning administrator will put on their case. And then we go back to the appellant for a short time to rebut or close. Throughout all of this, the board can ask questions. So it runs kind of similar, or parallel, I should say, to our when we have objectors. It's just different because this is an appeal. So with that, Counselor Fatikas, I think you're staying on this one. I see Neil Connolly raising their hand, and I believe that's the appellant.
Correct, the property owner, correct.
So Neil, you're promoted, so you're good.
Okay, great, can you hear me?
Can we begin?
Okay, thank you very much. Again, for the record, Chairman, my name is Nick Fatikas. So I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of Sam Banks, located at two twenty-one North West Al Street. And I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the Connolly Brothers LLC. The appellant, in this case, owns a subject property at thirty-one thirty-five North Oakley. The subject property is improved with a two-story principal building located at the front of the lot and a two-story coach house located at the rear. And the appellant is proposing to complete renovations to both the principal building as well as the coach house structure. Now, during the permit review process, the number of legal units located within the principal building was challenged. And that's the primary issue for the board this afternoon. When the appellant purchased the property in 2020, there were three residential units located within the principal building. One unit was on the first floor, one unit was on the second floor, and a third unit was in the basement or garden level. And what we've come to learn is that sometime in September of 2007, a prior owner appears to have pulled a permit for the conversion of the basement unit. The issue is that the conversion work was never actually acted out or completed because the subject garden unit remains in existence today. And as you saw from our findings of facts submittal, the subject unit is serviced by its own front and rear entrances and stairs. Those features were never removed or closed off. The garden unit also has its own heating, plumbing, and electrical service that are all in operational condition today. And there's no evidence that these utilities were ever removed from the basement. And again, we submitted, along with our findings of fact, photos of the various fixtures and utility elements, all in current condition today. Although the unit itself is not in great condition, there's no question that it's a finished apartment unit. And again, these conditions are the same as they were in 2020 when the applicant purchased the property. Now, given the discrepancies between the building permit history and the actual existing unit count within the building, the appellant attempted to obtain a new permit to resolve the issue. Unfortunately, the subject property is located in an RS-three zoning district, and the current zoning doesn't allow for the increase of one unit without some type of relief. So the appellant then attempted to seek relief pursuant to Section seventeen thirteen one zero zero three BB as another way to potentially resolve this issue. And, Mr. Chairman, a copy of that section was submitted, again with our findings of fact submittal. And it reads that in the case of a building permit application for the repair, remodeling, and/or alteration of buildings that have been in lawful existence for fifty or more years, containing not more than six dwelling units, sought to correct notices of violations cited by the department buildings or for the voluntary rehabilitation of such structures in which there is evidence that the building was converted, altered, or used for a greater number of dwelling units than existed at the time of its construction, the zoning administrators authorized to approve an administrative adjustment to make zoning certification of the increased density not to exceed more than one unit above its original construction upon review of documented evidence supporting such increased density. And the section basically breaks down to provide four criteria for consideration. The first is that the building is at least fifty years old. And during our review with the department, we confirmed that the building appears on the sand worn maps, and we're not aware of any issue specific to that standard. The second is that there's evidence that the building was converted, altered, or used for a greater number of units that existed at the time of its construction. And this criteria may very well be where the department's issue lies. But we believe the principal building was constructed as a three-dwelling unit building. However, the permit history converted it to two units in 2007, even though the third unit remained. So on its own, that permit history is the evidence that we believe meets the standard for the second section. Again, three units existed when only two were permitted, per the city's records. Now, the third prong is that the requested unit increases not more than one unit above original construction. And again, we believe we meet the standard because we're only asking to permit one unit for a total of three within the principal building, which is within that allowance per the section. Lastly, the applicant is required to provide the administrator with documented evidence supporting the increase in density. In this case, we provided the zoning administrator with photos of the existing building, photos of the subject unit, photos of the fixtures and utilities that serve that unit, a copy of the zoning certificate, copies of the building permit history, and even the Cook County Assessors Report, which recognizes a three-unit building with, quote, "full and apartment basement level." Again, copies of all of those submittals were included in our findings of fact. And we believe that the information we provided is more than sufficient to satisfy the last standard. And in totality, we believe our application should be considered per Section seventeen thirteen one zero zero three BB. Now, we also understand that the zoning administrator is not obligated to agree with us or approve our request. But in this case, the administrator decided that we're not even eligible to present our case to the board. And frankly, that's where we take issue. The administrator may not believe that we've met the standards. He may come to a different conclusion based on the information provided. But our position is he cannot unilaterally prevent us from proceeding to the zoning board by withholding the denial letter for a variation pursuant to that same code section. And I'd also want to point out, so I want to be clear that the appeal today is not challenging the administrator's decision regarding the facts that we presented. Instead, our appeals focus directly on the procedure that should have followed when the administrator made his decision. And again, for the record, Section seventeen thirteen one one oh one A provides that the zoning board has authority to grant, as a variation, any matter expressly authorized as an administrative adjustment. We simply want an opportunity to make our case to the board. Now, we're also here arguing in a bit of an alternative relief scenario. We believe the facts presented in this case support consideration that because the garden unit was never actually removed and because there's no conclusive permit history to prove otherwise, the board has the authority to acknowledge the garden unit is still being in legal existence. As I stated earlier, we provided photos of the existing front and rear entrances, photos of the interior of the unit, photos of the fixtures and utilities that serve that unit, the building permit history, and the Cook County Assessors Report, again, recognizing a full and apartment basement level. While the department will argue that the zoning certificate recognizing the permit for the two-unit conversion is the controlling document, if that same document relies on incomplete or incorrect permit history, then the natural conclusion is that unit conversion never actually happened. So where there are three units, so the three unit total in the principal building never changed. To put it another way, if someone pulls a permit to build a new three-unit building, but that person never actually builds the building, it would be very difficult for the department to recognize three legal units existing at that property. We're simply asking the board to apply that same logic. A conversion permit appears to have been pulled. The work, though, was never done, and the unit remained. The unit count never actually changed. And that finding, should the board grant the alternative relief, would actually avoid the variation process and allow the applicant to proceed with its project, again, based on the information presented today. With that, Mr. Neil Connolly is available to answer any questions. Neil is one of the managing members of the appellate entity. And I believe Thomas Montgomery, our project architect, is also on the call and available to answer questions if you have any of him. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. And we have Steve Valenziano as well. Nick, so did you want to bring your applicant through? Any questions, or since we're just gauging the denial, can we go just straight to Steve Valenziano to hear from the department? Nick?
I'm so sorry.
Hey, Counselor, I was wondering, so I'll go to DPD unless you want to question.
I'm so sorry. Yes, I thought you would call Steve, so I muted myself.
Oh, sure, sure, okay, yeah.
Again, our position in this case is really more of an appeal of the procedure. If our questions of the applicant or the architect, I'm making my witnesses available. I do not have any direct questions of them as part of our appeal presentation.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, so let's go to Steve Valenziano, Department of Planning and Development. Steve, can you just state your name and role, and I'll swear you in?
Yes, Steve Valenziano, Assistant Zoning Administrator for the city of Chicago.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, perfect. Go right ahead.
So following along with what Nick has presented is pretty accurate. But the one issue is that in February of 2007, the building was inspected, and there were a number of building violations, or a number of violations. And one of them was the basement unit was illegal and needed to be deconverted. In June of 2007, a permit was pulled to repair the front porch. That was one of the violations. And to take care of some other violations. Then in September of 2007, another permit was pulled. And on the application, it says to de-convert illegal basement unit and remove all electrical wiring. So our position is that if that permit was issued to remedy violations, which included numerous violations about the basement unit not being livable with air and vent violations, door size violations, so on, then the applicant needs to then perform the work that they got the permit for, not just, we got a permit and now we're going to continue on in violation of the ordinance. The Section seventeen thirteen zero one zero zero three BB is talking about a building that has been in lawful existence for fifty or more years. And that's what we found, is that the permits were issued to correct violations. If you're in violation, then you're not in lawful existence.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions from the board for Steve? Okay, so let's go back to the applicant. And Nick, I don't know if you want to rebut any of that, and then questions from the board for your side as well?
Oh, I appreciate it. I actually just want to make two points, two rebuttal points before concluding. The very page that we submitted with building permit inspection records has a disclaimer. It's the first paragraph that appears on that document, again, a copy of which was submitted with our findings of fact submittal. And I actually believe I went as far as to highlight it. But it says, or it reads, "The information presented on this website is informational only and does not necessarily reflect the current condition of the building or property." "The fact that a permit was issued does not confirm that work was performed or that work was performed in accordance with that permit and the requirements of the municipal code." The very issue was to the permit which the city is relying on. Again, I appreciate that permit history. But it's forcing an incorrect conclusion that all of the work was done. We believe we've shown through the photos and through the history that that unit remained. And that's the crux of our argument. Again, Mr. Valenziano also testified that his interpretation was in 2007, the basement unit was cited as being illegal. That fact is actually even more of a reason we believe we comply, or at least are eligible, to make our case to the zoning board. Section seventeen thirteen one zero zero three BB specifically says there has to be some evidence of a conversion that was done. Basically, there has to be an illegal unit for us to try and bring into compliance. Now, in terms of, no, we're not speaking of hardship because we're not here on a variation application. But that work, the permit application and the work that wasn't completed, was controlled by the prior owner. The current owner of the property, the appellant in this case, purchased the property in 2020. So we're trying to, again, unravel the permit history and the work that wasn't completed. So we're trying to, again, unravel the permit history and the work that wasn't completed. We believe we meet the standards to at least bring the case to the zoning board. And I'd also point out that, my last point, I'm so sorry, but my last point was Mr. Valenziano mentioned that if there is an illegal unit, then there cannot be, you're not in lawful existence. The very section that we're citing says, or reads, that in cases of a building code violation where there's evidence that the number of units has been altered, makes us eligible. So we respectfully disagree with the conclusion that the fact that the unit was, were added and/or retained without a permit, that actually helps us meet the standard or the criteria under that specific code section. Otherwise, that interpretation would render Section seventeen thirteen one zero zero three BB entirely moot, because no one would ever be able to show evidence of an altered number of units, because they would automatically be out of, not in lawful compliance or not in lawful existence. So again, we do not, we're not faulting or appealing the decision of the zoning administrator. We're simply saying, because he's not comfortable making the decision based on this fact pattern, we should at least have our opportunity to present our case as a variation to the board.
Okay, thanks. And so, and let's, you first, I'll say, any questions from the board?
Uh, yes. Um, for, for Nick, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, Nick. Are you appealing the? I mean, it seems like you're appealing the procedure here, that what the zoning administrator is saying, you don't fit under seventeen thirteen one zero zero three BB. So the result should be that, that you should get issued a denial so that you can then apply for a variation? Is that what you're saying?
So, yes, we're asking for alternative relief. So the first, the, what we'd ask the board to consider is that we're at least eligible to make, we're not saying that you're going to approve the variation, but we're at least eligible to file the variation and present the facts of the case to the board to make a decision. Again, I went through the, the information that was presented to the zoning department to at least validate that we believe there's at least a question that we could bring to the zoning board as to whether or not we meet that criteria. Alternatively, this, the second paragraph of the denial letter specifically cites that the city is relying on the two thousand and seven permit that de-converted the unit. Our, our position is that that deconversion never occurred. And although a permit issued, we're not challenging that. The fact that the conversion work was never acted on, that the plumbing, the electrical, the fixtures all remained in the unit. Again, the board has the authority to say that was an, while the permit issued, the work was never completed, and the deconversion never occurred. So we are asking for the board to at least consider the alternative relief. If the board believes that the permit, at least, if, if the board's not comfortable recognizing the three-unit total always remain, or we'll call it backup in, in the form of alternative relief, is to be able to bring the cases of variation back to the board.
So which, which, which argument is primary here?
Well, I think the one that cuts to the, that gets us through the permitting issue as it exists or stands today, the primary issue would be that it's an ineffective permit, because although it issued, it was never acted on. If the board, again, believes that the permit interrupted the unit count total, then we at least have, as a fallback, the variation to be able to say, again, the permit issued, the actual conversion work didn't occur, there was an alteration that occurred contrary to permit, we fit the criteria under the code section. So, well, I, either, if you're asking what the appellant would prefer, we'd prefer that the board recognized that there's already three units, and there's no need for a variation. Alternatively, if we need a variation, or at least we're not asking the board to say we're going to approve the variation, we're simply saying the zoning department should issue the denial so we can bring and make our case to you under a variation as opposed to an appeal today.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. My question is for Steve, because I'm trying to understand the department's argument here. But I'm also trying not to ask you to restate it completely. So are you? Are you? I guess I am asking you to restate your argument, because it's not clear. Is it that? I, I think it's clear that the work to get rid of the third unit wasn't done. Is it because there were other violations related to the third unit that you're not? Considering it? Or I'm not really clear on the department's position.
So we were, we're not, we, we did not grant the authorization to go to the zoning board for variation, because there were uncorrected violations. The permit was issued to correct violations in two thousand and seven. If the work was not done, then those violations were not corrected, and therefore, we can withhold the authorization to move forward until the, until the violations are corrected.
So if the violations were corrected, you would entertain the the additional work that the applicant wants to do? Is that what you're saying?
If the violations were corrected, then they could not reestablish the what, what we believe is an illegal unit. Section seventeen dash sixteen dash zero five zero three A of the zoning ordinance says the city officials may deny or withhold all permits, certificates, or other forms of authorization on any land or structure or improvements there, thereon, upon which there is an uncorrected violation of provisions of the zoning ordinance. So that's what we're saying, is that a permit was issued to correct a violation. The applicant is saying the permit was never acted upon, even though it was issued, so the work was never done. Therefore, the violation is still in place.
Was the violation the third unit, or were there?
The violation was many violations. I mean, it was a number of violations. It was porch violations, there were ventilation and light and vent violations, door size violations, illegal unit. There was a number of violations on this building. Debris, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors. There was a number of violations. They're all contained in that permit number one hundred one seven seven six seven nine issued in June of two thousand and seven. So there, those, again, if, if the violations, or if the permits were not acted upon, then the violations would still exist.
Commissioner, if I may.
One, yeah, go ahead, though. I probably have another question for Steve. Go ahead.
Yeah, Nick, your response would be helpful.
Yeah, my response to that is, again, I'm asking the board to specifically read the language provided in seventeen thirteen one zero zero three BB. And I'm going to, I'm going to cut to the important parts. In the case of a building permit application for the repair, remodel, or alteration of a building, specifically, the code section reads, sought to correct notices of violations cited by the Department of Buildings or for the voluntary rehabilitation of such structures. Again, we believe we meet that criteria in this case. The fact that there were building code violations does not prevent us from moving forward under this specific code section. So again, while I agree that in a typical or normal scenario, the zoning department, the Department of Buildings has authority to, to not issue permits based on other open items, the simple fact is this specific section is sought, is directed at this same situation, being able to bring those items into full compliance. Again, we're relating back to a two thousand and seven building condition. The building obviously has survived the last, call it fourteen, fifteen years. We're a new owner, we're trying to, to do the right thing in terms of renovate, remodel, bring everything into compliance. But the issue that holds us up, and I think Steve also agreed, if we were to get a permit to de-convert, we wouldn't be able to reestablish that unit, because that would be a voluntary act on our part. So we're really, we're really focused in on the code section that, as it, as it allows, again, an applicant, a building permit application specifically sought to correct a notice of violation issued by the Department of Buildings. If, if the Department of Buildings is not going to acknowledge that section, I'm sorry, if the Department of Zoning is going to rely on this section as saying that it has to be in lawful existence, but in the same, very same section, we're, we're making an application specifically to correct a notice of violation, there, there's then, then this session would never apply.
This is Commissioner Esposito. Nick, would you just clarify, the violations were recognized under a former owner of the property? Is that correct?
One hundred percent. In two thousand and seven. I'm sorry.
Permits were pulled by the former owner or the current owner?
Former owner. All of the violation history, and actually, the, the two thousand and seven permit history was a former owner. The current appellant, the current property owner is, purchased the property in two thousand and twenty. So again, I, I think I, in my case overview, we are admittedly trying to unpack what happened, not only in terms of the permit history, but the work that wasn't actually performed between oh seven and two thousand and twenty, when we took control of the building.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I've got another question for Nick. But Nick, do we have to reconcile seventeen dash thirteen dash one thousand and three dash BB with seventeen dash sixteen dash zero five zero three A? I mean, don't we have to read them together? I mean, I know you're arguing for the, for one thousand and three BB. Steve is saying zero, zero five oh three A. I feel like we've got a disconnect here. Don't they have to be read together?
Generally, yes, but at the very same time, this, the ten oh three BB has a specific criteria set that specifically references a building permit application sought to reckon, or sought to bring into compliance, a notice of violation. So I don't know how else to read it. Yes, there are other issues, maybe there are carbon, carbon monoxide, or, and that's not the case, I'm using this as a hypothetical, that there are other permit issues that would need to be resolved. And I, I don't want to speak for Steve. My understanding is we wouldn't be able to apply for a permit to address one and not all of the violations. That's how I've interpreted that section, the section that Steve referenced, that you can't piecemeal it. You either, you do it together, you don't. In our situation, in order for us to be eligible to make the application to keep the basement unit, and then more so to reestablish it or establish it as a legal unit, the variation is required.
All right. Am I correct that as we sit here today, there is an uncorrected violation of a provision of the zoning ordinance or of a condition or qualification of a permit, certificate, approval, or other authorization previously granted by the city for this property?
So there's an unacted-on permit that dates back to two thousand and seven, and there's a unit count discrepancy because of that unacted-on permit from two thousand and seven.
Is there an uncorrected violation of a provision of the zoning ordinance?
The unit count is the only provision of the zoning ordinance, because there's an inconsistency in the building permit record.
Okay, thank you.
I know we jumped around a bit, but that was helpful. But more questions? Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me pose the, the same question to Steve. Because I'm looking at seventeen dash sixteen dash zero five zero three dash A. And is there an uncorrected violation of a provision of the zoning ordinance or of a condition or qualification of a permit, certificate, approval, or other authorization previously granted by the city?
There is a violation of the zoning ordinance in that, the, in the number of units on the lot in an RS three district.
Okay.
And then there was a permit issued to bring that into compliance, so that was authorization granted through, by the city. And we're being told that, I mean, that's, that's, that's where we stand, is that there, there was a permit to correct violation, and the permit was not acted upon. So now we're at, being asked to ignore the previous permit and requirement to come into compliance by, by going through an administrative adjustment or variation process.
Right. And this, the, the provision that you're relying on, seventeen dash sixteen dash zero five zero three dash A, does, it says this provision applies regardless of whether the current property owner or applicant is responsible for the violation in question?
Correct. The property is in violation, not the owner, you know, technically.
So under these circumstances, it's, it's the zoning administrator's position that they have the right to, to do what?
To withhold authorization. So that's what the, that's what the appeal is. The, the appeal is, at least the way I understand it, from what Nick was saying and how it was filed, was that they're appealing the, our decision, the zoning administrator's office decision to not authorize them to proceed to the zoning board through a variation process. And that we, this section says that we, we may withhold authorization if there is evidence of an uncorrected violation.
And, and Nick, on this specific point, do you have anything to add that you haven't stated already?
The only thing to add is a plain read of Section seventeen thirteen one zero zero three BB, which contemplates that any applicant attempting to use this specific code section to bring a unit into compliance must first be out of compliance. There's, I think, to your point, Commissioner, th, these two code sections are at odds with one another. One is saying if there's a violation, the city doesn't have to issue the denial letter, doesn't have to authorize the, the denial letter so that it can go forward to the zoning board. At the very same time, the section that we're relying on, that we've relied on the entire time, contemplates in its very language, in its very text, that there's a violation or an alteration that occurred without a permit.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
This is Jolene Saul. I guess, Steve, can you speak to that point of what I understood Nick saying, is there a, there's a contradiction in the the ordinance? Can you speak to that point specifically?
Well, there is a contradiction, but it does say, again, in the section that I'm relying on, seventeen dash sixteen zero five zero three A, that city officials may, doesn't say must, may withhold all forms of authorization on any land or structure or improvements if there is an uncorrected violation of the provision of the zoning ordinance. So there, there was, there, again, there was a permit that was issued, and it said to remove that unit. And they didn't. And so now it's come back, you know, fifteen years later, and just say, well, we didn't do the work, now we want to correct it, even though you were supposed to correct it in two thousand and seven. The other thing is, with that provision, Section BB, it, it's a little unwieldy in its, in its own right, because it talks about a building being in legal or lawful existence. So what the department is typically asked to see that the unit has been in lawful existence, or not lawful existence, has been in existence, because neither can be in lawful existence if they weren't done with the proper permit or to be established. So again, we don't want a fifty-year-old building, somebody to come in in two thousand and nineteen, and I have a fifty-year-old building, and put a unit in, and then come back and ask for forgiveness, you know, two years later. That wasn't the idea of that section. That section came about, whatever, in the eighties, late eighties. because of a lot of older buildings with illegal apartments. But this, in this specific case, there's a rear building with two units in it. There's the front building with, that had two units and was, uh, had three units, was supposed to be deconverted to two units to come into compliance with the ordinance. So we feel that that's, that's what should happen on this property. That's what was supposed to happen on this property. That's what the former owners, uh, had a permit to do and said they were going to do, and now we're still in violation.
And so you sent, you, so you just said you have discretion, but because there was a permit in 07, you, you're, the zoning administrator is using their discretion to say?
Fix it.
And Chairman, if I, if I may just briefly respond to that, that discretion, that the term, I think Steve said it, it, it's not a requirement. It's not a must clause. It's a may clause. The fact that we're, we're not saying that zoning administrator made a, uh, incorrect determination on the facts presented. But our position is they cannot unilaterally withhold us from moving forward as a variation. He may not agree, zoning department may agree, but we still have the right under section 17131003BB to attempt to get the zoning board to agree with us.
Yep. And
That, that's our
I, I just want to throw out because there's definitely some contradiction here. And, you know, for, um, the board awareness, the conflict provision of the code is, um, 17-1-1002. And basically it says, when there's a contradiction with two separate regulations, the more restrictive, the more stringent controls. Um, so a little bit ambiguous, right? Cause we're hearing some back and forth on the which is more restrictive, but um, that's the provision on conflict.
Thank you.
Nick, on, on that point, do you have a position on which of these two sections we're discussing is more restrictive and why?
I certainly think the section that the applicant or the appellant is relying on 17131003BB is more restrictive because it specifies specific criteria. And it takes the question of discretion out of the equation. Where the section that Steve's relying on, again, is a may clause, not a must clause. We must satisfy those four elements. By, by, by contrast, the zoning administrator may withhold or may authorize. And again, he, in our opinion, instead of the, instead of authorizing this, the administrative adjustment and approving the additional unit, the, what we think the right thing was at that point to do is to issue a denial letter and say, take it to the board, prove your case to the board. That's where the may comes in versus the requirements that are set in stone by 17131003BB. Because if we fail on any one of those, we must meet each of those criteria to prove our case.
Steve, do, do you have any response to that?
The only, um, the response I would have is that as an appeal, the board has to find uh, that the zoning administrator has made an error in making the decision that was made.
And I, I think, and I think, yeah. I, I think if I understand what Nick is saying, that he's saying that the administrator erred because you're relying on a, that you, between these two sections, you have to look at 17-13-1003-BB, because that is the more restrictive provision as opposed to, um, 17-16-0503-A. That's less restrictive. That refers to may. Um, the one that Nick is relying on refers to, you know, it's, 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 it's must, it's mandatory. So let me ask a question. Does is it the zoning administrator's position that um, the applicant doesn't meet the criteria of 1713-1003-BB?
Well, um, that would depend on, I mean, I haven't, I'd have to look at the evidences to when, how long the unit has existed in that building. That's how I would look at that. Um, and that's not what the appeal is. So I don't, I would have, that would be a whole nother question. If the board, if, if the board decides, um, in favor of the appellant, then they will be, then they should be able to apply for a variation following the, the, uh, the section 17-131003BB criteria. So that's what I would say, cause I'm not, I'm not really looking at this based on that section. I'm looking at this based on there were violations to bring those violations into compliance. They got a permit and the, uh, permit, they did not act on the permit, therefore they're still in violation. So I mean, I'd have to, that'd be me then reviewing it under BB, which we did not do. We
Sorry. This is Jolene Salt again. Um, I guess the same question that Brian asked to Nick, I'll ask to you Steve, which of those two do you think are more restrictive?
Well, um, see, I don't think the 17 dash, uh, I don't think the BB section, the, the administrative adjustments section is more restrictive because that is something that an applicant can, can apply for or not. And this one is something that the zoning administrator can do or not. So both of them are a choice, both of them. Uh, while you do have to follow the, uh, criteria set forth in that section, there's nothing that says that that section has to apply to the property. There's, you don't have to apply for an administrative adjustment. You can come into compliance with the ordinance, with, with the, with the, with the, uh, bulk and density regulations of the district that you're in. So the way I see it, there, there, it's, uh, ambiguous because they're both a choice.
Any, any thoughts from Nick on that argument?
I, I respectfully disagree. Our position is twofold. One, Steve, uh, said that you have the right or you have, you're allowed to do that. Case in point, we haven't been allowed to do that. We haven't been given the variation to bring our case to the zoning board. And the choice in this case then becomes, do we go forward on a permit that just was, that just foregoes the existing unit? And I think that's, while there is choice involved, in order for us to bring the property in compliance, we need the variation. And we haven't been allowed to file the variation. That, that's it. That's our case.
Thank you.
Good. Any, any other questions from the board? Nick, did you try administrative adjustment or did you go that route?
Unfortunately not. We initiated our application asking for an administrative adjustment. We were told, and again, I'm, I'm summarizing email history, um, that was not provided in the findings of fact, but to give you guys a little bit more insight. We sought an administrative adjustment initially. We were told that we weren't eligible for the administrative adjustment because of the permit history. At that point, my office requested a variation denial. And it led us to an appeal because the department was not willing to issue the variation denial. So we filed an appeal to attempt to get the variation denial to bring this case back before you, so we could prove the, the merits of the case at that time.
Okay.
Steve, is that accurate, Steve?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration and thanks very much everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. We do want to get through, um, a couple more quickly before we, um, break for lunch shortly. So let's go to calendar number 125-22-S. Council Fatikas, I know that's with you. Same applicant as 126. Could we take them together?
You know what? Let me, um, let me, let me try. And if there are questions specific to either, it's the same applicant, same special use request, a little bit of a different factual background. Um, but that, that's it. So I, if, if Ed Clark and Sylvester Kerwin are promoted, Chairman, just to save time, I can start my introduction.
I'm going to read the department's recommendation as they get promoted. And I'll just say, if anyone is here to object to 125 or 126, raise your hand and we'll get you promoted as well. Um, and, uh, so for 125, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon. For 126, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon. So let's see if we have. We've got Edward Clark, um, and Bud Kerwin.
Yes, great. Okay. So again, Chairman, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Clark 2112 LLC, series 3018 through 24 West Armitage, which intends to do business as Chicago Salon Suites. The applicant owns the ground floor retail unit at 3018 through 24 West Armitage Avenue, and he's proposing to establish a salon suite concept in that space. The retail unit contains approximately 25,000, I'm sorry, 2,500 square feet of, uh, floor area. And it would be divided into 10, uh, suites that would be leased to independent licensed service providers. In order to permit the underlying personal service use, the applicant is seeking a special use because there, there is at least one other personal service use within a thousand feet. Again, our applicant is Mr. Edward Clark and our MA appraiser is Mr. Sylvester Kerwin. And if I can, just to try and hear these together, uh, Mr. Clark is also the managing member of Clark 2112 LLC, series 2724 North Lincoln. 2724 North Lincoln is a 2,000 square foot retail unit um, that would be divided into, or that's divided into nine salon suites. Again, that would be leased to independent service providers. Um, a special use is required in that case for the same reason that this, the personal service use is located within a thousand feet of another uh, personal service use. And with that, um, Mr. Clark, uh, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, do you want to swear him in?
Yes, please. So Mr. Clark, will you state your name and address?
Yes, my name's Edward Clark. My office is at 2124 West Elmont in Chicago.
Great. Thank you so much. And, um, uh, Mr. Clark, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Um, and then Sylvester Bud Kerwin is sworn in and his expertise has been acknowledged.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so again, Clark, again, you are the, uh, manager of both applicants, uh, in these two consecutive cases?
Yes, sir.
And as I stated in my introduction, you're proposing to establish a salon suite concept in each of the, the two locations. Is that right?
That's correct.
You own both of those locations?
I own both locations.
And you again would lease the independent, or you would lease the salon suites to independent service providers at each location. Is that right?
Yes, that's so.
And everybody that you lease to is, will be property licensed in their particular trade, uh, or service area. Is that right?
That's correct.
Um, in terms of, um, treatments or, or services provided, uh, hair cutting, washing and styling, manicures, pedicures and various skin treatments, um, are, are on the menu. Is that right?
That's so.
But you're not proposing massage or any type of permanent application, makeup application that would, uh, actually require additional approvals by this board. Is that right?
That's correct.
And both locations will operate Monday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM and Sundays from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Is that right?
That's correct.
And again, we've, uh, presented this concept to the board previously, but those individual service providers are responsible for, uh, their scheduling and their, their own, uh, daily routine at the facility. Is that right?
Yes.
And you're, again, you're not providing, um, treatments or services. You're essentially providing the space that those independent professionals would work within.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Kerwin, are you still with us?
Yes, good afternoon.
Um, but you did the, um, appraisal report for both of these cases, again, 3018 through 24 West Armitage and 2724 through 26 North Lincoln. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And, uh, it's, you provided separate reports for each of these applications?
Yes, I have.
And it's your understanding that my office filed a copy of that report or those reports with the board already? Is that right?
Yes, that's also correct.
And generally speaking, is it your conclusion that the special use criteria are being at, at both locations?
Yes, uh, my analysis of the area that they meet all of the, uh, uh, criteria for a, uh, special use at each of those locations.
And Bud, if you were to continue to testify this afternoon, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I did my best to condense it. If you have any questions of the applicant or Mr. Kerwin or myself, uh, we'll, we'll make ourselves available now.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, any questions from the board on, on either of the special uses? Okay, Counselor, I think we've got everything we need on this one.
Great. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Everyone, we'll take it under consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so let's do one or two more. Let's see, see how, um, it goes. Uh, so number 127-22-S. Um, if anyone is here to object for that calendar number, just raise your hand, we'll get you promoted. As the attorney, Matthew Alley, gets settled, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed liquor store.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Alley here.
Hey, Matt, we've got you.
Can we confirm, uh, we have two witnesses, uh, for this matter, uh, the applicant, Bupendra Patel. Um, and then I know Joe Ryan is our appraiser. I've seen him already today.
Yep. I, um, I see Bupendra signed on and Joe is, Joe is still on as well. Yeah.
Very good. Excellent. So again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, members of the board. For the record, Matthew Alley with the law firm of Shane Banks, Kenny and Schwartz, located at 70 West Madison Street, Suite 2300. I'm appearing today on behalf of Shifdata Inc., doing business as Clarendon Food, Wine and Spirits, located at 4183 to 4185 North Clarendon Avenue, which is seeking a special use in order to establish a liquor and convenience store in the B3-2 Community Shopping District, zoning designation of the subject property. The applicant seeks to take over the space currently occupied by Clarendon Food Mart, Inc., which is a legal special use and has operated as a liquor store for over 20 years at this location. The subject unit is a 2,490 square foot retail space located on the ground level within a three-story mixed-use building with retail spaces on both adjacent sides of the subject unit. The applicant currently owns and operates four other hospitality businesses throughout the city of Chicago, including two liquor and convenience stores. First Liquor Expo, located at 2154 North Halsted, which opened in May of 2018, and Southport Beer, Wine and Spirits, located at 3201 North Southport, which opened in April of 2021. As such, the applicant and his staff are well experienced in the operation of packaged goods businesses and are Basset certified. Furthermore, the applicant's existing liquor stores have never been cited for a violation of city or state regulations. In addition to packaged goods, the applicant will also offer common convenience store items for everyday use such as groceries, snack foods, soft drinks, over the counter drugs and toiletry items. The applicant's proposed hours are 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to midnight on Friday and Saturday, and 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays. The applicant intends to make improvements to the interior retail space, including the installation of new interior and exterior security cameras, but business activities and the exterior of the building will remain the same as today with the exception of new business signage. The applicant has a five-year lease to occupy the subject unit, and if the proposed special use is granted, will open a liquor and convenience store that operates according to the highest public standards. The proposal will add to the public convenience, is compatible with the surrounding area and is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. and is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. This is further evidenced by the applicant's support by the Buena Park Neighbors Association, the Uptown United and Uptown Chamber of Commerce and local alderman James Kaplan. Finally, the applicant has not received any objections or concerns through the public notice process. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would now look to call my first witness, Mr. Bupendra Patel, uh, if you could swear him in, please.
Absolutely. Um, Bupendra, will you state your name and address, please?
My name is Bupendra Patel and the location address is four one eight three to four one eight five North Clarendon Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, my home address is, uh, of, uh, the, uh, four six one five, Chicago, Illinois, sorry.
Great. And just so you know, our court reporter might have some, I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you. So if you can just, um, speak up a little bit, it'll help our process. Um, do you, Mr. Patel, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, and Joe Ryan is sworn in and we've acknowledged his expertise.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and in, in the interest of time, Mr. Chairman, I would certainly proceed with, um, a, a, an expedited line of questioning, but wanted to confirm whether or not that we had any objectors on the line.
Yeah, no, no one has raised their hand. Yeah, so you can, um, go forward with the streamlined version.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Patel, um, are you the, an authorized representative for the applicant Shifdata Inc. for this special use application, correct?
Yes.
And you have a five-year lease to operate a liquor and convenience store at the premises located at forty-one eighty-three to forty-one eighty-five North Clarendon Avenue, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Patel, did you submit an affidavit to the Z B A prior to today's hearing?
Yes, sir.
And the statements made in that affidavit are true and correct?
Yes, sir.
And lastly, do you adopt as your testimony here today, the statements contained within your affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions from the board, at this time, I would be ready to call our second witness, Mr. Joseph Ryan.
Yeah, let's get Joe on and then we'll circle back for questions.
Great. Uh, Mr. Ryan, uh, you are the appraiser for the special use being sought at forty-one eighty-three to forty-one eighty-five North Clarendon, correct?
Yes, I am.
Uh, did you prepare a report evaluating the special use application for compliance with the Chicago zoning ordinance?
I did. I did.
Great. Um, and the statements you made within this report are true and correct?
Yes, they are.
Uh, do you adopt as your testimony here today, the statements you contain within this report?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ryan, did you also submit an affidavit to the Z B A prior to today's hearing?
I did.
And similarly, the statements made within this affidavit are also true and correct?
Yes, they are.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today, the statements contained within your affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that would conclude the applicant's case in chief. Uh, we would welcome any questions or comments from the board regarding our proposal or submitted findings of fact.
Great, thanks, Counselor. Um, any questions from the board? Okay, we have what we need. Um, I appreciate everybody's time as always and, uh, Mr. Patel, enjoy your weekend and good luck.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, I know the board is hungry. So we're going to go ahead and call, um, a little bit over a thirty-minute recess. Um, that will bring us to, let's say, one forty-five PM Central. Um, Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sol?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I thought yes, um, we are on recess. Thanks, everyone.